Good afternoon, calling to order the July 25th City Council Meeting at 3:05 PM. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Osadurian.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kusakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Brotman.
Here. May we have your report, please?
It would be the closed session items. 1A, conference with legal counsel pending litigation. Salazar versus the City of Glendale et al., LASC case number BC 700257. Item B would be public employee performance evaluation, city manager. C, conference with labor negotiators. The city designated negotiator attending the closed session is Mayor Dan Brotman. Unrepresented employee position, city manager. D, public employee performance evaluation, city attorney. E, conference with labor negotiators. The city designated negotiator attending the closed session is Mayor Dan Brotman. Unrepresented employee position, city attorney. F, conference with legal counsel. Anticipated litigation, significant exposure litigation pursuant to paragraph subdivision D2, E2, and E5 of Government Code Section 54956.9. Two potential cases. G, public employment attorneys. H has been moved. I, conference with real property negotiators. City negotiators attending the closed session are Rubik Kalanian, John Tuktayen, Jason Bradford, Michael J. Garcia, Jillian Van Miden, Gary Schaefer, and Christina Gerber. Property location, 1,000 East Palmer Avenue. Negotiating parties, Newmark Real Estate. Instructions to negotiators will concern the price and terms for the lease of property. J, conference with real property negotiators. City negotiators attending the closed session are Rubik Kalanian, John Tuktayen, Bradley Calvert, Jason Bradford, Michael J. Garcia, and Jillian Van Miden. Property location, 212 and 216 South Brand Boulevard. Negotiating parties, Museum of Neon Art. Instructions to the negotiators will concern the price and terms for the lease of the property. K, conference with legal counsel. Pending litigation, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 18, versus the City of Glendale case number LACE 805M. Purb decision number 2694M. I, conference with labor negotiators. The city designated negotiators attending the closed session are Rubik Kalanian, John Tuktayen, Michael J. Garcia, Jillian Van Miden, Tim Ernst, Paula Adams, Amy Martin, Jason Bradford, and Laura Kalte. The name of the employer organization is Glendale Firefighters Association. M, conference with labor negotiators. The city designated negotiator attending the closed session are Rubik Kalanian, John Tuktayen, Michael J. Garcia, Jillian Van Miden, Mark Young, Paula Adams, Amy Martin, Jason Bradford, and Peter Brown. The names of the employer organization is IBW, Local 18, Unit 40.
Yeah, that's a lot. Thank you. And Mr. The City Attorney, do we anticipate reporting out on any of these items?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. We do anticipate reporting on item K. In addition, with respect to the two items of anticipated litigation listed on the agenda, one has to do with the threat that we've received previously regarding the city's at-large election system. The other item is the threat of litigation we've seen from Mr. Najarian, and I do believe he wants to address the council before you go into closed session.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. Is the mic on? Yes. I didn't want to make this a public discussion, but the city attorney indicates that I must not be able to enter closed session. I'm here to reiterate my strong warnings to the council that the actions taken by the city currently with regard to promoting the district elections, which three of you support, as the three of you plus the elected mayor issue is a very dangerous path that you're taking. The city attorney has responded to my letter, which I sent, putting the city on notice and warning. Basically, he's raising two points. Number one is that what the city is doing is not express advocacy for or against the districts. The second point he makes is that regardless, there's no ballot issue before you yet. And I take strong objection, and I disagree with all due respect to the city attorney. The actions that the city is taking is express advocacy. The website that we have indicates that there will be better representation for the residents, greater constituent services provided to the residents. It will be easier to get elected to the city council. That there hasn't been a mayor from South Glendale, that renters will have a chance. That is not based in fact. That is complete speculation. There is an argument that constituent services are not any better. There's an argument that as to the members of South Glendale who have not been represented, well, surprise, I was serving as mayor while I was a renter in South Glendale. The city has not just given false information, but is inviting residents to take part in a formation of, let's just cite it, workshops give community members an opportunity to connect with others engaged in the district formation process. This is advocacy. This is argument for the creation of districts. And the standard is not express advocacy. The Supreme Court in the Vargas case citing the Stancin case indicated that there is a line which must be observed, and that is the determination of the style, tenor, and manner. So what you're doing, it's not so much an argument against districts, although you know I don't support them, but we can't be sending a message with city money to the voters. Where is my voice? Three of your voices are included in the website. I also am entitled to a voice under my First Amendment to present that information. So I hope that the city attorney can give you advice. I do believe that the city attorney furthermore is conflicted and should not be able to advise the council on this matter due to the nature of a council member who has worked under him, who also has direct oversight over him, to be defending the city in this matter. I suggest that the council retreat from their current actions, appoint, request the state attorney general to take this over. This is something that I'm committed to, and this is a hill that I'm going to die on. I'm here to tell you that. I will fight every, with every ounce of my sinew to stop the city from continuing its efforts to use its public money to influence the district election, which as we know, five years ago failed miserably. And the Mines case indicates that an opposing view must be presented as well. And that's all I need to say.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we'll recess to closed session. Good evening and welcome to the July 25th Meeting of the Glendale City Council being called to order at 6:05 PM. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Osadurian.
Here.
Devine. Kusakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Brotman.
Here. And would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, sovereign, just for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let's begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Tongva people. Creator, we give thanks for the blessings that you have bestowed upon this community and ask that you keep us embraced in your care. Grant our council wisdom and compassion as they conduct the business of the great city and let their decisions be in accordance to your plan. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Do you want to attribute those words to someone, or are those original thoughts?
Okay. May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the July 25th, 2023 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Wednesday, July 19th, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay. And what is next?
Item 3, presentations and appointments. The regular meeting for the city council and the housing authority on August 1st, 2023 have been canceled. The next regular meeting will be held on August 8th, 2023.
Thank you. That was the agenda preview. And then we have some proclamations. Can you read the first one, please?
Correct. Item 3B, proclamation designating July 30th, 2023 as Korean Comfort Woman Day.
Okay. So we have an exciting proclamation here, which I will read, but as I'm reading it, would the team in the front row, I don't know if I have all your names, I know Chang, but you can maybe introduce everybody and bring them forward, and then I'll read the proclamation, and then we'll ask you to say a few words.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, council members, and the city staff, it's been 10 years since we erected this monument, and this is 12th proclamation of the Comfort Woman Day. And we have Korean community groups that's here from KARE. We have the curator artist from Korea. We have Hwan Young Youth Group that was here. And I'm gonna make my speech very short because we have a lot of presentation to you thanking City of Glendale and mayor and the council members for being the leader, as you are, to protect the human rights issues, especially the women's rights issues.
So... Okay, well, let me read the proclamation.
Yeah, I'm gonna bring the group up.
Yeah, bring them up.
Can you all join us, join me? Yeah. Why don't you come on up? Come on up now, everybody.
Okay. So I'll read the proclamation.
Whereas during its colonial and wartime occupation of Asia and the Pacific Islands from the 1930s through the duration of World War II, the Japanese Imperial Army commissioned the acquisition of young girls who became known to the world as comfort women. And whereas the comfort women's system of forced military prostitution by the Imperial Army is considered one of the largest cases of human trafficking in the 20th century, and whereas the City of Glendale commends the United States Congress House of Representatives for the passage of Resolution 121 and joins with their recommendations that the government of Japan should educate current and future generations about this horrible crime while following the recommendations of the international community with respect to the comfort women. And whereas the City of Glendale has a longstanding history of recognizing cultural diversity and has been a strong advocate for human rights around the world. This was evident in 2012 when the City of Glendale first proclaimed July 30th as the Comfort Women Day, and in 2013 when the Glendale City Council voted to approve the Comfort Women Monument in the Glendale Central Park. Since the decision was made, the City of Glendale has continued to support the efforts to secure the rights of those known as comfort women. Now therefore, I, Daniel Brotman, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim July 30th, 2023, as Korean Women Comfort Day and extend our profound hope that bringing these atrocities to light will serve as a grave reminder to the world that crimes against humanity will not be condoned or tolerated.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
We have President of the Hwan Young Youth Group, Madison Lee, who is going to make a speech.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Madison Park, and I am a 17-year-old high school student acting as the 2023 to 2024 Summit Chairperson of the Hwan Young Youth Foundation. Today, I would like to shed light on a significant and often overlooked chapter of our history, the story of comfort women. These were thousands of women who were subjected to sexual slavery during World War II, mainly by the Japanese Imperial Army. Their experiences continue to resonate deeply with the Korean-American community, connecting us with the important factors of our culture's history. The comfort women's system established by the Japanese military forcibly recruited women from various countries, especially South Korea, to serve as sexual slaves for their soldiers. These women endured unimaginable trauma, violence, and exploitation, enduring physical and psychological suffering that lasted long after the war ended. The impact of this dark period in history is not limited to the past. It has reverberated through generations, shaping the modern Korean-American identity. Many Korean-Americans are descendants of those directly affected, carrying the stories and scars of their ancestors. The comfort women topic remains a significant part of their collective memory, reminding them of the resilience and strength exhibited by their foremothers in the face of unspeakable atrocities. Moreover, the struggle for justice and recognition for the comfort women has become a symbol of Korean-American activism and advocacy. Korean-Americans, along with allies, have worked tirelessly to raise awareness, seek reparations, and demand accountability from the Japanese government. Their efforts highlight the importance of confronting historical injustices and standing up for human rights. Today, only a handful of these women remain, their average age well into the 90s. It is crucial to understand that the apologies issued by the Japanese government thus have been insufficient. While some apologies have been made, they have often lacked sincerity, failed to take full responsibility, or dismissed the gravity of the crimes committed against these women. This is simply unacceptable. These women have waited far too long for justice, healing, and closure. We must also engage in diplomatic efforts to hold the Japanese government accountable. International pressure and cooperation are essential in seeking justice for the comfort women and ensuring that their voices are heard on a global platform. This issue transcends borders and requires a united front in the pursuit of truth and justice. The comfort women issue with more general discussions on general equality and sexual violence. By acknowledging the suffering endured by these women, we recognize the broader patterns of violence against women that persist today. The legacy of the comfort women serves as a reminder to combat gender-based violence and to promote a society that respects and protects the rights and dignity of all individuals, regardless of their gender. In conclusion, the history of the comfort women is a painful chapter that connects deeply to the modern Korean-American identity. It reminds us of the resilience of the survivors, the ongoing struggle for justice, and the importance of addressing gender-based violence in our society. By acknowledging and understanding this history, we can work towards a more inclusive and compassionate future. On behalf of the Hwan Young Youth Foundation, I would like to thank you for your time and constant support throughout these trying times. As an extra thanks of active gratitude, we have also prepared some awards to hand out to the mayor and the council members.
Before you do that, can I have Phyllis Kim, who just said a few words? And then we have a few, you know, appreciation plaques to present to you.
Okay.
Thank you so much. My name is Phyllis Kim, and I remember 10 years ago, I stood here with, in front of the city council to pitch for, to give us a space for a public comfort women monument. And there were, we were outnumbered at the time by the deniers and opponents who did not want the comfort women statue in our park. But I remember vividly that, you know, one of the council members with an Armenian background understood the issue from the heart that denying history is commission of another crime. So the monument was unveiled, and the city was sued. Mr. Garcia, thank you so much for leading the lawsuit to the victory. And, you know, I just want to say one thing, that Glendale is the shining light for other cities and other communities, that Glendale defeated the lawsuit, defeated the revisionism, defeated the opponents that, you know, and showed the whole word that Glendale will stand by the truth with the victims and with the diverse communities. And I really want to thank you so much.
So thank you. If you can all please come up with a proclamation, mayor, and then we'll have opportunity to give you some flowers and plaques. Thank you.
Okay, why don't we come here for a photo?
Okay.
Oh, good. Malcolm Johnson. Our court photographer. Well, wait, I think you should, you should hold this and hold this. Why don't you hold the proclamation here? Yeah, how's that? Are we gonna get everyone in there?
Thank you.
Now, stand there. So we have a certificate of appreciation for the city council members. We made a certificate with the four faces of grandmas who visited Glendale, his monument after the monument was unveiled. So Grandma Yung Soo Lee, Bok Seung Lee, Bok Dong Kim, she came here twice, right? And Grandma Yoo Chul Kang, they, two of them came here to support the lawsuit, to defeat the lawsuit. So I'll read.
You should. Yeah, yeah. That's right.
Certificate of appreciation presented to Daniel Brotman, Mayor of Glendale, on behalf of the grandmas and their...
It's very fitting because it's Mayor's birthday today.
I'll go home and I'll say, I got these for my birthday. Wow. Wow. Wow, look at this. It smells good.
Also, artists from Korea.
Oh, well, maybe you could put them there. I only have two hands.
But can we take photo?
Yeah, let's take a photo. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So generous.
Just a quick announcement. Okay. The quick announcement is that, so we are, the community is celebrating the 10th anniversary of the installation of a Peace Monument and 12th proclamation of the Glendale Comfort Women Day on Saturday, this coming Saturday, at 4:00 PM in front of the statue. We're going to have a very short program in front of the statue outdoor because it's hot, and then we're going to go inside to ARC and have a full program. And after that, at 6 o'clock, we're going to have a special exhibition opening and reception at the Reflect Space in the Central Library. So everybody's welcome. It's free to attend. Please come, join us. Thank you.
You're off the screen. Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm ordering the posters for the exhibit. You know, this art exhibit, you know, goes on every year. This is a 12th art exhibit, and it's in Central Library, Reflect Space, and it'll last till September 24th. So I welcome every Glendalian to come and, you know, see these wonderful exhibits from Korean artists. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, I have my mic off. And I think we should call out and recognize the council at the time this monument was put in place. I think both of you, Councilmember Najarian and Councilmember Devine, were on the council, and it was also Mr. Quintero and Councilmember Friedman, right? Now assemblyman?
Sananian.
And Sananian. Oh, Sananian. Councilmember Sananian and who was the fifth?
That was it. Ara, myself, Frank, Ara.
Okay, so just want to recognize them for making this happen 10 years ago.
And if I, if...
Yes, yes. Councilmember Asatryan, please.
I think Councilmember Devine wanted to...
Oh, you wanted to say something?
Well, no, I just wanted to say that it's been an honor to, and I'm so proud to have been a part of this erection of the statue. I've always said that women's rights are human rights, and as Councilmember Quintero said, we did the right thing at the right time. And I thank you for all the gifts, and I'll see you on Saturday. Thank you.
Councilmember Asatryan?
You know, I think no matter how many times or year after year, as we commemorate this very important date, I can't help but get emotional because I think there really is a connection here between not just being a woman, but being an Armenian and recognizing what that means and what denial means. I really want to commend the efforts of the youth that are in the back. I know that during your statement, you noted that there's very few that remain and the work that you carry on in educating the public and the world. Because at the end of the day, whether or not they're gone, there's a lot of generational trauma that comes with, you know, somebody being a victim or survivor of sexual violence and human trafficking. And especially nowadays, you know, I think I was looking it up. According to the State Department, there's 27.6 million people, an estimate around the world, that are victims of human trafficking right here, right now, as we're sitting here. And so, thank you for your efforts. I attended last year's, I think one of the things that I took away from that is how we engage the larger community, because this isn't just a commemoration for the community, for the Korean community, but this is a cause that should be near and dear to everyone's hearts. And so, I hope the larger community joins in that commemoration and your programming on Saturday. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Would you like to...
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Again, I want to thank the individuals who came and spoke, and you were far too generous, especially to those of us who were not on the council at the time the decision was made to erect this monument. But I think it's important for us to remember history. As I prepare this evening to ask for an adjournment for my professor of history at UCLA, I'm reminded that history ignored is history repeated, and I commend those of you who speak truth to power and knowing that acknowledgement of the past begins a path of greater understanding and moving forward, but more importantly, assuring that such atrocities will not be repeated again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And I'll hold my comments. I know I'll be there on Saturday and I'll be saying a few words, so we'll leave it there. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to our next proclamation. Could you read that?
Item 3C proclamation designating July 2023 as Parks Make Life Better Month.
Okay, and who do we have to collect this? We have a dog. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff. My name is Sabag Garvidian, Community Services Manager with the Community Services and Parks Department. I'm standing here on behalf of my colleagues in recognition of July as Parks Make Life Better Month. My colleagues and I oversee 47 parks and facilities throughout the city, and it's, almost all of our sections are represented today, and combined, we're able to provide the services to our community. With the help of GTV6, we were able to prepare a video. They did a wonderful job in making this possible for us, so if you could take a second to watch that video.
Parks, just hearing the word brings excitement. Parks, it's a place we frequent from a very young age. Parks, a place for splishing, splashing, learning, and cooling off. Parks, it's where the dreams begin. Parks, where we gather with family and friends. Parks, where we celebrate culture and traditions. Parks, where we continue to go in our golden years. Parks, where we always go to, and it does, make life better.
So I wanted to thank, again, GTV6 for helping us put that together, and I wanted to recognize all of our staff, our hourly employees, our full-time employees, that on a daily basis, nights, weekends, we don't stop and we make sure that all of our facilities are running up to par, all of our programs...
Parks, just hearing the word brings excitement.
Can't get it out of your head now.
It was done on cue.
All of our programs are being delivered in the manner that we all expect, all of our residents expect, and that's a big thank you to all of the staff. I'd like to invite Joe. Joe is our CIP manager, and he's going to share some information, which is why we brought some friends with us, so I'll turn it over to Joe.
Good evening, Mayor, council. So my name is Joseph Gonzalez, Park Planner with the city, and I'm here with my dog Lucy. We're here just to provide an update and highlight the Dog Park Feasibility Study and upcoming community workshops that are planned for the city. Just some quick background, on March 3rd, this council approved the scope for this Dog Park Feasibility Study, and in May, we kicked off the study, and we have two upcoming workshops planned, the first of which is on Monday, July 31st, at 6:00 PM at Pacific Community Center, and there we will be talking about potential dog parks located in South Glendale as part of the study, which include Palmer Park at the Community Garden and Glendale Community College, Garfield Campus. And the second community meeting will be on Wednesday, August 2nd, at 6:00 PM at Brand Park. We'll be talking about potential dog parks located in North Glendale, at Brand Park, south of the Teahouse. Noting as well, we'll have a raffle at each of these workshops, three $50 Amazon gift cards, and we've also initiated an online survey for people to provide their feedback directly as well. It's hoping to see everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you, did you have more?
No, that's it.
Okay, so I have, I do have a proclamation here, which is actually very long, so I'll read it, I'll read it quickly. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of the communities throughout this country, including the city of Glendale, and are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, and whereas even though, even through a pandemic, local parks, virtual recreation trails, open space, and human services remained accessible to our community, whereas throughout the city of Glendale, we are fortunate to have 47 beautiful parks, recreation and special use facilities, including 286 acres of developed parkland, and over 5,000 acres of open space, a historic nature center and a wide variety of outdoor recreation opportunities for its citizens and visitors. And whereas the Community Services and Parks Department promotes physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness, and offers an array of opportunities to go outside, create memorable experiences, and play through fitness classes, sports and recreation programs, cultural events, lifelong learning classes, and parks, trails, and facilities for fitness and sports activities for all age groups and abilities. And whereas the Community Services and Parks Department also provides programs to address the basic human service needs of its residents, including senior nutritional meals and case management, youth and family outreach, information and referral, youth employment and youth life skills training, homeless case management prevention and housing, and job training programs. And whereas the Community Services and Parks Department strengthens community safety and reduces juvenile crime while fostering youth development and growth into productive adults through an array of after-school and seasonal programs. And whereas the strength of Glendale has increased through intergenerational recreation programs and events for all ages that allow people to play and grow together while providing the opportunity for residents to lead balanced, rewarding, and healthy lives, and whereas the Community Services and Parks Department remains versatile and innovative in providing vital services to our community, now therefore, I, Daniel Brotman, Mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim July 2023 as Parks Make Life Better Month in Glendale, and call all our citizens to celebrate by participating in recreational activities and community serves, services, I think, and spending time in our community parks. There we go. All right. Moving right along. What is next?
Your next item is item D through Q, and this has to do with Identification of Nominating Panel for the Boards and Commissions.
Okay, and before you read all these panels, I would like to ask the city attorney if we can consider something that, that may be a concern because some of the council members kind of missed their six-month window to make their appointments. Is there, is this something that we can consider now to maybe extend that one or two months so that they have adequate time and then come back to these panels?
Mayor Brotman, members of council, so the clerk was not going to read it, he was just, by identifying them on the agenda, that moves it forward. But to your question, the 90-day, it was 90 days, it wasn't six months, it was a 90-day window to make those appointments. The council would have to revise the resolution to establish that, so you can ask for us to bring that. It's not an ordinance, it's in a resolution, so council can ask us to bring that back, and then we can, we can, the council can consider an amendment to that to extend that period. Other than that, this will be, with no change, it'll go forward as presented on the agenda.
I'd like to bring that back, Mr. Mayor, if you're... You'd like to bring that back? And you would like to bring that back? Are you okay?
I'm not okay, but I'm not going to stand in the way of a majority opinion of the council or desire. But I do want to mention that on some of these panels, there was one in particular, I think it's maybe for parks, that the panel is, one says Kasakian, Asatryan, the other one says Asatryan Kasakian, and I think that the intent of what we proposed was to not have the same individuals or same duo making the nominations, to mix it up, to give everyone an opportunity. So I'd like us, I know that during our briefing, you mentioned that that would correct itself over time because of whatever methodology is being used, but I'd like us to find a way to even in an instance like this, for the sake of transparency and instilling further trust by the public in what we do to modify it.
Thank you.
If the council, under our policy, we'd have to bring it back first for the council to agendize it, and then we, but we could bring it back in short order after that. I would just note that, to Councilmember Kasakian's point, that's correct, the assignment of the panels is done chronologically based on when a position becomes vacant or has a term expiring, and so that's why in one case, it was, to use the example, it was Asatryan Kasakian, and then later on, there was another opening, and it was Kasakian and Asatryan, but it was, it was down, down, down the list. So we can certainly address that when we bring those two items back, if you, the council so desires.
Okay. And I'm okay, you know, extending it another 30 days. I think we do need to get closure on this and move on, but, you know, I'm not going to fuss with extending it. Now, how, so we have to actually ask for that to be on new business, and then it's got to be on new business two weeks from now?
Right.
And then it gets agendized?
Yes.
Correct. But the report itself would be very short. I would just put the, basically, give the council the resolution, and then we can agenda, have a very short report, and bring it back as soon as possible.
We could bring it back like even the next week after...
Yes.
So, Mr. Mayor, a council member needs to make a motion, and we need two votes per the new process.
No, remember, it was just one, one councilor makes the request, it comes back the following week.
You're right. On August 8th, it'll be on the agenda as a new business item for discussion, and bring it back on the 15th.
There's three votes on August 8th, and it comes back as an agenda item?
On the 15th.
On the 15th?
Is there another way that we can do this? Because this is listed as an agenda item already, and we are talking about this, under this item, like, can it be a decision that is made based off of this? So then it's not brought back as a new business, then it's not brought back, so we can, then it can just...
I understand the concern, and I understand, I understand the frustration, but unfortunately, the item that's on is for presentations and appointments, so no discussion or real action can take place tonight, so it would have to come back. And that, you know, maybe that's something we discuss about for certain items, maybe not do the two-step process, but we'll...
To the rule?
Yeah. Here we go, right? But anyway, that'll, that'll come later, but we'll, again, we'll bring it back for, on the 8th, for the council...
It's not an ordinance, it's in a resolution, so council can ask us to bring that back, and then we can, we can, the council can consider an amendment to that to extend that period. Other than that, this will be, with no change, it'll go forward as presented on the agenda.
I'd like to bring that back, Mr. Mayor, if you're.
You'd like to bring that back? And you would like to bring that back? Are you okay?
I'm not okay, but I'm not going to stand in the way of a majority opinion of the council or desire. But I do want to mention that on some of these panels, there was one in particular, I think it's maybe for parks, that the panel is, one says Kasakian, Asatrian, the other one says Asatrian Kasakian. And I think that the intent of what we proposed was to not have the same individuals or same duo making the nominations, to mix it up, to give everyone an opportunity. So I'd like us, I know that during our briefing, you mentioned that that would correct itself over time because of whatever methodology is being used, but I'd like us to find a way to even in an instance like this, for the sake of transparency and instilling further trust by the public in what we do to modify it.
Thank you.
If the council, under our policy, we'd have to bring it back first for the council to agendize it, but we could bring it back in short order after that. I would just note that, to Councilmember Kasakian's point, that's correct, the assignment of the panels is done chronologically, based on when a position becomes vacant or has a term expiring. And so that's why, in one case, it was, to use the example, it was Asatrian Kasakian, and then later on, there was another opening, and it was Kasakian and Asatrian, but it was down the list. So we can certainly address that when we bring those two items back, if the council so desires.
Okay. And I'm okay extending it another 30 days. I think we do need to get closure on this and move on, but, you know, I'm not going to fuss with extending it. Now, so we have to actually ask for that to be on new business, and then it's got to be on new business two weeks from now?
Right.
And then it gets agendized?
Yes.
Correct. But the report itself would be very short, I would just put the, basically, give the council the resolution, and then we can agenda, have a very short report, and bring it back as soon as possible.
We could bring it back like even the next week after?
Yes.
Yes, so Mr. Mayor, a council member needs to make a motion, and we need two votes per the new process.
No, remember, it was just one, if one councilor makes the request, it comes back the following week.
You're right. On August 8th, it will be on the agenda as a new business item for discussion, and bring it back on the 15th.
There's three votes on August 8th, and it comes back as an agenda item?
On the 15th.
On the 15th?
Is there another way that we can do this? Because this is listed as an agenda item already, and we are talking about this, under this item.
I don't think so.
Like, can it be a decision that is made based off of this? So then it's not brought back as a new business, then it's not brought back, so then it can just?
I understand the concern, and I understand, I understand the frustration, but unfortunately, the item that's on is for presentations and appointments, so no discussion or real action can take place tonight, so it would have to come back. And that, you know, maybe that's something we discuss about for certain items, maybe not do the two-step process, but we'll.
To the rule?
Yeah. Here we go, right? But anyway, that'll come later. But we'll, again, we'll bring it back for, on the 8th, for the council to ask us to agendize it, and we should be able to bring it back on the 15th for you to make that change.
What happens in the meantime?
Well, I would, you know, the panels are created, but I would, you know, you all seem in alignment not to make any appointments until we bring it back, and you've all had the opportunity to discuss it. So assuming that's all true, then no further action would be necessary. We would ask the clerk not to continue with advertising until you've had the chance to make this decision.
Well, we can, could we not still advertise to get applicants in for these positions? There's no reason not to do that.
Correct.
Okay. But none of us will propose anybody to be nominated or voted on to.
And assume the exception is the civil service commission, because that was previously decided.
Yes, yes, yes. That's already going on. Okay. Thank you for that. Good. Okay, so what's next?
Next item is consent items, including minutes, the following a routine, and maybe acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Hey, do I have a motion for the?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, and we have no, nobody wants to pull anything, and nothing from the public? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asatrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Brotman?
Yes.
By the way, my mic was off, but I'm a yes, thank you.
Okay. And next is?
Next item is city council and staff comments.
Okay, and councilmember Kasakian?
Thank you, Mayor. It's, again, I come with another request for a motion to adjourn in memory of a very special individual, and unfortunately, they say it happens in threes. We've had the loss of Steve Artenian, we had the loss of our mayor, former mayor Carl Ragio, and this time, I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Richard Hovanesian, Professor Richard Hovanesian. He was a renowned scholar and professor, particularly recognized for his expertise in Armenian and Near Eastern history. Born on November 9th in 1932 in Tulare, California, Hovanesian dedicated his life to the study, teaching, and preservation of Armenian history and culture. Hovanesian obtained his bachelor degree in history from the University of California in Berkeley, and went on to earn his master's and PhD degrees from the University of California, Los Angeles. He joined the faculty at UCLA in 1962 and remained an integral part of the university until his retirement. During his illustrious academic career, Hovanesian held various prestigious positions at UCLA. He was the associate director of the UCLA Center for Near Eastern Studies and served as a first holder of the Armenian Educational Foundation, chair of modern Armenian history. Some would argue that he was the founder of modern Armenian history in American academia. His insightful and dedicated teaching earned him the title of Professor Emeritus of Armenian Near Eastern History at UCLA. Professor Hovanesian's contributions to the field of Armenian studies are immeasurable. He is widely regarded as a leading authority on Armenian history and has authored numerous influential publications. His works encompassed a wide range of topics, including the Armenian genocide, the history of the Armenian diaspora, and the modern history of Armenia and the Caucasus region, including his seminal volume and works on the First Independent Republic of Armenia. In addition to his scholarly achievements, Hovanesian was an active member of the academic community, held numerous leadership roles, serving as president of the Society of Armenian Studies and as a member of the Executive Board of the National Association of Armenian Studies and Research. His dedication to his field earned him numerous accolades and honors throughout his career. He was recognized with prestigious awards, such as National Order of Merit of the President of the Republic of Armenia, the Mufses Khora Nazi Medal from the President of the Republic of Armenia, and the Makhitar Gosh Medal from the Catholicos of all Armenians. Richard Hovanesian's tireless efforts to promote and preserve Armenian history and culture had a profound impact on academia and beyond, as commitment to education, research, and Armenian community will continue to inspire scholars and students worldwide. He passed away on July 10th in Los Angeles at the age of 90. We mourn his loss, and our thoughts and prayers are with his family and friends. He was interned last week in the historic Arrad Massey Cemetery in Fresno alongside other Armenian heroes, patriots, pioneers, and scholars. We'll just say that the motto of the University of California is Fiat looks, let there be light. And in Armenian, as I've said, we say, may the Lord illuminate your soul in heaven. So hopefully, his light will continue to shine on future scholars and lead them on to a path of learning their history and spreading goodwill and information and knowledge to other generations. So I ask we adjourn that in memory of Professor Richard Hovanesian.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Kasakian? Okay, Councilmember Asatrian?
You know, I joined in with Councilmember Kasakian. Dr. Hovanesian was also my professor at UCLA. I think that was the case for many Armenian-American students that attended the university. And I have to say, I saw him recently at a community event. I think he was much more than a professor to all of us, he was a mentor, a grandfather figure. He wrote me possibly one of the longest emails a professor has ever written me. I was working on a city council campaign in 2003 in Glendale, and I would be late to class. He would stop the whole class, start asking questions, and then I got a very long email saying, you know, campaigns will always be there, college is once. And so I kept that email, because within it were a lot of other life lessons. And I think the fact that he took so much time to be personable and personal with each of his students spoke volumes about how much he cared about not just passing on the history of the Armenian people, but serving as a role model to all of us that took his class. I have one thing that I wanted to note. I visited, along with Mayor Brotman, the Pasti Humane Society this last week. It was my first time attending, had an opportunity at the end to also speak with the program director. I recognize that in the past, we used to have adoption days in Glendale. I've reached out to some of our farmers, Marcus, to see if we can continue to collaborate with them in bringing some adoption days. One of the things that was noted during the tour is folks are bringing in their pets at an all-time high, higher than post-COVID. There are a lot of programs that are available for those that are having a difficult time purchasing food and supplies and need assistance. And so if you are thinking about possibly giving up your pet, before you do that, please know that there's a lot of resources available. Pasti Humane does an incredible job with not just providing those resources, but also connecting with other community connections. And so I wanted to pass that on, and I know I also reached out to our parks director in asking the same, so I know staff is also going to look at some of the events that we have coming up, that we can also team up with them to hold adoption days in Glendale. Also, if I may, on a happy note, I just wanted to wish our mayor a happy birthday, because it is his birthday today.
Happy birthday.
And Councilmember Kasakian's birthday is at midnight, so if we go on until then, happy birthday to you both.
Thanks. Thank you. Councilmember Devine?
Thank you, thank you. The last time we met, we adjourned in memory of Carl Ragio, our former mayor, and I attended his celebration of life this past week. And I learned so much about this man and his impact outside of our city, and I thought it was worth a minute of our time tonight. I had no idea that he had a part in inventing an instrument, a heart-lung machine, after the death of one of his sons. And, this is the, I think, the most awesome part, is his name is going to be etched on the equipment that is going to Venus. So he will be on Venus for a time in the heavens that so influenced his life. And I thought that's really, I think, an awesome thing, and I hope, I just wanted the community to know that he is going to be in the heavens. I also attended a celebration of the 30th anniversary for the Glendale Youth Alliance. They have impacted over 12,000 lives of our youth with their job programs and just their education and programs for our youth. And so 30 years is something to be proud of as well. And I also wanted to wish the mayor happy birthday, and Councilmember Kasakian as well. We won't go into the ages, though, will we? No. Beatles.
I don't care.
Think of the Beatles, think of the Beatles.
People are playing a Beatles song for me, so you can guess my age if you're in that, if you're in the Beatles era.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. So I'd like to apologize to my colleagues and to the public for my behavior for the past year. Starting in July of last year, I took the chairmanship of LA Metro, and that meant I had to miss some very important city events, such as the State of the City luncheon that Mayor, then Mayor Kasakian put on, many community meetings, some groundbreakings, and a lot of, a lot of other things. It was a pretty intense job. That one year has come to a close, and yesterday, I handed the gavel ceremonially to LA Mayor Karen Bass. This was my second term as LA Metro Chairman. Larry Zarian, our previous mayor, served one term. It was a very challenging year, and Metro put together this video. So these are my excuses as to why I couldn't be with you on all those important events. Chair Solis, I kindly accept your gavel, and will use it wisely as you have.
Thank you.
And as incoming board chair, my priorities will be threefold. Continuing and strengthening our agency's commitment to make safety our number-one priority. Today, we are announcing that Metro staff has successfully trained nearly 300 Metro ambassadors. Our new ambassadors will play a significant role in Metro's multi-layered and reimagined approach to public safety.
This is really a superb day. It's an excellent day. The K-line is officially Metro's seventh rail line to open in our county. And for once and for all, LA will have a direct transit connection to the airport, which makes it a game changer for the region.
Metro looks forward to working hand-in-hand with Senator Padilla to ensure that the president's recommendation of $250 million in new starts funding for this project is realized later this year. I think as we stand here in this park, we can truly say that for Angelenos who live next to freeways, sound walls do more than just reduce the noise emanating from thousands of vehicles around the clock, they bring us all peace of mind. Free Metro Go-Passes for our 15,000 community college students is fantastic. It is one of the most transformative efforts to help our residents gain access to educational opportunities. We want every day to feel like Transit Equity Day for our customers, like our Go-Pass program for students K through 14, or Life Program. We are absolutely committed to the ideals of racial justice, equity, and access to opportunity for our customers. It was back in 2006, when I was just a young man and a young board member, that I put forth a motion, I'm going to claim the title as father of the Regional Connector. Metro proudly announces the opening of the Regional Connector Project is truly the missing link in Metro's ever-expanding rail system. I do have to work on my ambassador swagger, though. So anyway, thanks for putting up with me and tolerating my absences. I will continue to work hard to bring Metro resources to the city. I'm still on the board of directors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so I have two things. First, I want to mention that Walk-Bike Glendale, which is our walk and bike advocacy organization, organized a community ride, which I got to headline, Ride with the Mayor, and I think last year's Ride with the Mayor, Councilmember, then Mayor Kasakian, headlined, and that was probably the first one. So it seems to be now a new tradition. Senator Portantino joined us, along with over 50 participants, believe it or not, 50 people who actually went on the ride. There were more that came earlier and picked up free helmets and free lights, bike lights, and there was a bike repair clinic, thanks to, I think they're called Walkin' Rollers, I hope I have that right, Walkin' Rollers, came and were doing free bike repair. It was a great event, a little hot, but not as hot as we thought it would be. So I want to thank Walk-Bike Glendale for organizing the event, Walkin' Rollers for giving us their time for free bike repair. And also, I want to mention that we had two officers from the Glendale Police Department, Officer Daniel Lee and Officer Edgar Zabunian, who came on their brand-new Glendale Police Department electric bikes and rode with us and kept us safe. And those bikes, which I understand we've just received 10 or 12 of them, are, interestingly, the same make and model as the bike I have, the Bulls Urban Evo, but their bike is a little nicer than mine. They've got suspension, so they can ride downstairs, they've got all these other bells and whistles, literally whistles, they've got like a police siren on it and incredible lights. And if there's any way that I can kind of swap mine in for one of those, I would go for it. But it's great to see that we've gotten these bikes, and I understand it hasn't maybe been fully announced and not fully developed and rolled out, but we will be having a, we'll be converting at least part of our downtown patrol over to these electric bikes, which are going to allow a lot of flexibility that cars don't have. You can go up and downstairs, you can, you know, go through places where cars can't access. And it's electric, all carbon-free. So I want to thank the Glendale Police Department for doing that. Chief Sid in the back, just want to say thanks for making that happen, and it was a great event. I also want to talk about the heat a little bit. It's been hot, maybe some people have noticed, not so much here, or not only here, but around the world. We know that this month will end up being the hottest month in recorded history, and the hottest of any time, at least since humans began to settle into agricultural communities, let alone create organized civilizations. Some people are calling it the new normal, but it's not the new normal. It's actually a little bit of a taste of what's to come. What we're calling the hottest July in human history might well, and probably will, end up being one of the coolest Julys of the century, when our kids and grandchildren look back and curse us perhaps for our complacency and disregard for their well-being. So I mention this just to urge all of us to accelerate everything we're doing on the climate, whether it's mitigation through clean energy and electrification, and things we're going to talk about later today on gas leaf blowers, and adaptation. How are we going to keep people living comfortably in this city when we have long stretches of very extreme heat? One specific point I want to end with, and this is maybe a question to the city manager or to Mr. Calvert over here, head of community development. And I've gotten this report last year, and again, that we're seeing some shops, not only in the Americana, but especially the Americana, who are, you know, they have their doors wide open and they're blasting their air conditioning, and this is happening on these afternoons, and we're calling flex alerts, and we're desperately trying to protect, you know, our energy system. So I would like to hear, not now, but at some point, like, what are our options? What can we do, whether it's informal speaking to them, or it's something more formal, perhaps, some kind of an ordinance that stops that kind of behavior? Because I think this is no longer something that we can afford. I know they want customers to walk by and feel the cold burst of air coming out and walk into the shop, but this is costing all of us, and it's just not acceptable to me. So I wanted to ask if you could just look into that, we can discuss that offline. And I think that's all. So I will see. Do we have any staff comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing? Okay. Then move to community event announcements.
Mayor, we do not have any cards submitted, and we have no phone calls for this.
No cards, no phone calls. Okay, well, then what's next?
Next would be seven A adoption of ordinance, community development regarding ordinance of the City of Glendale, amending downtown specific plan DSP regarding hotel uses by Councilmember Devine on July 11, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, Mayor City Council. As was read into the record, council has already introduced the ordinance, and as part of the staff presentation, council members asked that we make adjustments to the incentive amenities that was proposed by staff. And if you like, Ms. Zemetides has one slide to share with you as the final tally of those adjustments.
Yes, Mayor Brotman, happy birthday, council members. A slide you have before you is the menu option table that was presented to city council several weeks ago. We've made adjustments to certain uses and added points and decreased points, and what you see before you would be the final menu option that is part of your ordinance for your vote this evening. So I'm not sure if council has any questions. We just wanted to keep it brief.
Maybe just mention the changes.
Of course.
Because there are only a few of them, but it's important to spell them out.
Yes, based on council direction, we have eliminated the contribution equal to half of the amount of the Affordable Housing Commercial Development Impact Fee. If council recalls, we are going to be taking this off this particular menu option and discussing this with council at a later date for hotels in general and in regards to the Commercial Development Impact Fee for affordable housing. We have decreased the point value system for lead platinum or equivalent sustainable design, based on council's direction, from five to three. We also decreased the live entertainment portion, or I apologize, we increased the live entertainment from two-point value system to a three-point value. We also, the separate spa facility open to the public was increased from two to three. The airport shuttle was increased from one to two. The full available bicycle rental, or bicycle share program was increased from one to two. The labor peace agreement requirement was completely eliminated. This is based on direction that was received during planning commission, and that remains to be deleted. And we added, based on Councilmember Asatrian's recommendation, outdoor pools at a two-point system, two-point value.
Okay, thank you. Do my colleagues have any comments? We do have one card, so if you would like, I can call the speaker first.
I have one comment. Oh, you know what? Just go ahead, and then I can ask after.
Okay, we'll call the speaker first. All right. Mike Barasoff, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I was here to talk about the Affordable Housing Commercial Development Impact Fee, but it got taken off because it's going to be talked about in later agenda item. So I'll just paraphrase essentially what I was going to speak on. Currently, it's $4, I believe, if it's over 1,250 square feet for a non-residential commercial space. And I was going to request a motion from council members to maybe increase that. Our sister city, Los Angeles, has about $3.61 starting, and it goes up until $6, depending on the market area and council districts. And, you know, if you can afford to build a hotel with like a tavern and a pool, I feel like you can afford to pay the extra Affordable Housing Impact Fee, considering that you're taking away space from potential residential building space. And that's all I wanted to ask for. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we are, the point of taking it off is that we are going to look at this separately with the possibility of applying this Affordable Housing Fee to hotels the same way we do to other commercial properties. That was our objective, not to, not that we don't care about it, but to not make it an optional thing for hotels necessarily. Okay?
Correct. And just for clarification, Mayor Brotman, council members, the fee itself is $5 a square foot.
$5 a square foot, okay. Any comments?
I just have one.
Councilmember Asatrian.
The one that I don't see in your, oh, never mind. Okay, you moved it. All right. Okay.
You're good?
Okay.
If there are no comments, I'll take a motion in a second.
I'll move it in a second.
Okay, move by Councilmember Asatrian, seconded by Councilmember Devine. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asatrian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Brotman.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Glad we've got that out of the way. It's been a year-long process, right? Okay, what is next?
Next item is eight action items, eight A management services regarding introduction of an ordinance banning the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. One ordinance for introduction.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Brotman, Mayor City Council, speaking of a long time in the works, staff is bringing to you introduction of an ordinance per council's direction to ban the use of gas-powered leaf blowers for your consideration. Now I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth Harris, our admin associate with city manager's office, to make the presentation, and she'll be ably assisted by David Jones, our sustainability officers, if you have any questions for him.
Great, thank you. Are you ready for it? So hello, Mayor and Council. I'm here to introduce the gas-powered leaf blower ban and review the ordinance with you. So for some of us, this topic is something that we know all too well, but I'll keep this presentation short. To start off with, I'm going to go over the story of us and leaf blowers and how this came about to refresh your memory. So this originally came to our office as a city council request regarding gas-powered stores or small off-road engines, and to look at options around that. We came to city council in October 2022, and that's where you gave direction for staff to investigate what would an ordinance or ban or regulation of gas-powered two-stroke engines, so engines like you see in leaf blowers and lawn mowers and such. And then I came back to you in February 2023, sharing our insights, and that's where you gave direction on to develop an ordinance focusing on the banning of gas-powered leaf blowers and the use of such equipment. And so now we're here to introduce an ordinance that is banning the use of gas-powered leaf So what this ordinance contains is first, it bans the use of gas-powered leaf blowers, and this is by any person in the city, so whether it's a staff or an individual. The only exception is for emergency responders during times of emergency, if they need to use such equipment to like remove debris from the road. Right now, it's written as the citation would go to the property owner or landscape maintenance business, but given that this ordinance is in the process of introduction, if you wish to focus solely on the property owner or maybe expand it to any agent or person that is found using such equipment, you can. This is opportunity to edit the ordinance. And then also, ordinance includes that we'll be doing a two-year education program with enforcement starting in July 2025, not 2023. That's a small mistake there. And this is an opportunity to educate the businesses and communities about the ordinance and as well as telling them about different incentive opportunities. And during this time period, if, for instance, staff does receive a call that someone is using a gas-powered leaf blower, we can also use this opportunity to send them like a friendly notice to let them know about this ban, as well as the funding and rebate opportunities. And when this does come into effect in July 2025, it would be first issued a warning, and if noncompliance continues, then it would go through citations following $100, $200, and $300. So we understand that community education would be a very important part about this, and we're going to collaborate with a consultant who are landscaping, education and research experts. These are experts in the field of landscaping, because we find that even though our team has been digging into this stuff, it's better to work with a team that are experts in this equipment and in this industry, and their work just hits different than us doing our work on our own. So part of that community outreach during the two years between the ordinance going into effect and being enforced, we'll ensure that there's going to be multilingual educational materials, because we know many, as research done about the landscaping industry, many of these landscapers in our area, English may not be their first language. We're going to do multi-channel opportunities, so like doing a combination of like flyers, but also in-person events and digital campaigns. And then this all education period is not going to just solely focus on like this ban is coming to Glendale, but also to provide information about electric alternatives for not just leaf blowers, but other landscaping equipment. So rebates and incentives is requested from council. We provide information about funding opportunities, rebates for these businesses and individuals, and there's opportunities at both state and air management district level. So for instance, there's the California Core, which is a state program, and these provide point of purchase rebates for businesses, professional landscapers, on commercial-grade electric landscaping equipment, so leaf blowers, lawnmowers, trimmers, et cetera, as well as batteries. The South Coast Air District has a commercial electric lawn and garden equipment incentive exchange program for commercial entities to get electric landscaping equipment, and they currently offer a residential electric lawnmower rebate program, not a leaf blower program at this moment. And then, working with our colleagues at GWP, they've included in their smart home rebate program for this fiscal year, a rebate for GWP customers to purchase an electric leaf blower. So this would be $40 if they purchased it outside of Glendale, $50 if they purchased within Glendale, and this would show up on their GW bill as form of bill credit. And so far, our outreach has primarily been focused on educating about the different funding opportunities. We've concluded the different programs, particularly the California program, Core program, through multiple newsletter distributions. Through this public process, we've received thirteen public comments that have come to spoken throughout the different meetings, and we've also, staff have received three emails about this, and predominantly, they've been in support of a leaf blower ban. And then our main form of outreach was an in-person demonstration event. Even though we had to come in with the rain that day, we were still able to reach numerous people and businesses around Glendale about the kind of like this event, but also about the California Core program and funding opportunities. And as we get our consultant onboarded, we would continue this outreach to the community as well. So it goes. I'm here to, I provided an overview of this gas-powered leaf blower ordinance, and it's up to you to provide feedback, direction on any changes that you'd like to make to this ordinance, or whether or not you'd like to introduce it. So I turn it over to council if you have any questions and comments.
Okay, any questions, comments? Councilmember Devine?
Yeah, I had a question on the two years that it's going to take to put this into effect. Can we not speed that up to one year or shorten that to one year?
If council wishes, you could direct staff to do that.
Okay, all right. I'd like to direct staff to do that.
Okay, let's go through, let's go through a few questions, comments, and then we have, I think only once, no, two, we have one speaker.
There's one caller, oh, there's one caller and one card.
One card and one caller. Okay, any other questions and comments?
I have questions and comments, but I'll wait for the caller.
You'll wait?
I have a question. Elizabeth, I missed that. Who gets the citation?
Right now, the ordinance is written that it would be the property owner or the landscape maintenance business.
Or the landscape. So, okay, so, I mean, those are the only two possibilities at this point.
Right now, but you could change it to be solely the property owner, or it could be any person, so any person who is caught using such equipment.
Does this ever turn, would we envision this turning into any, I mean, I don't want this to be a criminal issue. Let's say you get a citation, you don't pay it. Mr. City Attorney, is this something you would prosecute? I mean, it shouldn't be criminalized. That's my point. We should encourage, what we're looking for is compliance, not criminalization, especially, you know, these workers, I don't think are highly paid, but.
Councilman Najarian, so the ordinance is written, so there's a written notice and then administrative fine. Any violation of the code is technically, you know, subject to criminal enforcement. However, the way it's written, the goal of us is to administer it through civil administrative fines and not through enforcement. I mean, the only thing I say, any violation of the code, you want to have the most extreme remedy, the most severe remedy available, just in case for somebody who is a serial abuser, and where maybe administrative fines don't go through the process. But we understand what you're saying. You know, that is the rare, very rare exception, and really what you want to do is this process is called for in the proposed ordinance.
And I just want to clarify something. So assuming we introduce the ordinance today, vote on it in two weeks, then it would go into effect in thirty days after that, meaning that would be our policy, it would be in our code that leaf blowers are banned. We just would not be actively enforcing that through warnings and penalties for two years or however long we decide. Is that correct?
That's the way it's written, the ordinance.
Okay, because we have gotten some emails saying, you know, why are you delaying this for two years? And I just want to be clear, we're not delaying the ban, we're just delaying the enforcement of the ban. And I know that may be subtle, but I think there, the other thing that I brought up in the briefings was, and I think Ms. Harris just mentioned it here, like, so, so we, let's say this goes into effect thirty days after we vote on it, and then somebody calls and says, you know, my neighbor is using a gas leaf blower, right? We're not sending a warning letter, we're not sending a fine, obviously, but can we send some kind of a friendly notice saying, hey, the City of Glendale now has banned gas leaf blowers, please be aware? You know, we can assume that people probably don't know, and it's a good way for us to be responding to somebody who makes a complaint at the same time informing the property owner, let's say, that they may be in violation, because we're not actually going to go out and kind of physically look to see that they're doing it. We're just going to say, it has been reported, we have a new policy, blah, blah, blah. Can we, have you thought about that and what that might look like?
Okay, well, I think that is misinformation being given. Well, okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Yes, the plan would be leading up in that period of time that we would distribute kind of informational, not official citation, if you will. The direction is that we do not issue a citation for the first year or two, given the results of tonight. We would pay a visit in exactly as you described, you know, it has come to our information that you've been using a gas-powered leaf blower. Please be advised that, you know, the city has changed that ordinance, inform of the ordinance. Hopefully, if we can fit it all on this, direct them to the resources to get them rebates, things of that nature. It wouldn't be like our standard citation either. We wouldn't want it to look like one of those official citations. This would be more of a friendly advisement, if you will. And did you, was part of that question about the enforcement a year or two in as well?
No, 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 that was it, and I would support that approach, but Councilmember Asatrian had something to say.
So as I read this, page 149, it says commencing July 1, 2025, it is unlawful for any person to operate or authorize the operation of a gas-powered leaf blower. So as it's written.
Good point.
So I'm okay with this, because I do think that there needs to be an education component to it, but I don't want anyone to make a decision today based off the information that they're being provided then. So technically, in two weeks, when this is in the books, it's not unlawful for you to use a gas leaf blower.
Okay, can maybe somebody explain this discrepancy? Because I am confused now.
And I'd have to defer staff. It does appear, and it's in two places, I think that's where the point of confusion. So section 8.50, 0.020 does say commencing on June 1st, it shall be unlawful, and then explains, and then also says, 8.50, 0.040 says enforcement shall be suspended. So the ordinance takes effect, but as Councilmember Asatrian just noted, that's correct, it's not unlawful until July 1, 2025.
And then.
Can we make it, sorry, but can we make it that it is technically unlawful, but we're suspending enforcement? Does that make sense?
I guess, but I would not encourage that, because you're, again, if you're saying something is lawful, it's, it is a violation of the code, that somebody would have the authority to enforce on it, and it's probably, I think, I'll have to defer to staff as far as the writing of it, but it seems like the intent was to say no enforcement until July 1, 2025.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, so that was the direction that we had given staff for this report to come back. There hasn't been any community outreach or education done on this part, and I don't want. And I don't want us to move that date from this ordinance, um, and then have neighbors that feel like it to be able to use that against neighbors. Um, and then I think I had one edit that I had brought, brought forth during the staff briefing. Um, on page one fifty of two sixty-one, enforcement shall be suspended prior to July one, twenty twenty-five, or until the end of any extended public education period. Um, there was supposed to be a correction made, um, for the actual intent.
Uh, Councilmember Satrian, that's correct, we were gonna just suggest at the time of, uh, I was getting ready for introduction, for whoever's gonna introduce it to make it with that change. So it would be, we would make the change, so it would, uh, and the section is eight point five oh, point zero four oh. And, uh, and it would say enforcement shall be suspended prior to, uh, twenty, July one, twenty twenty-five, or until the end of any extended publication, education program authorized by the city manager, uh, whichever is later. So that would be whoever's gonna make the introduction, the recommendation would be to make that change.
Anything now, or?
Well, the only thing I would, uh, I wanted to say is I know that you outlined all the outreach, um, that you will do. But, um, I hope that will also target those stores that sell these appliances. I know that recently, when we had to, uh, purchase a, uh, I think it was a dishwasher, whatever the case may be. When we went to Lowe's, we were told that Burbank had a, because we had to go to Lowe's in Burbank. Um, but, uh, there was a fee apparently that the city of Burbank charged. And, you know, they were very thorough and before we even made the per- purchase, letting us know about what the regulations were. And we told them that was, and Glendale, turns out Glendale also has the same fee, so we ended up paying it one way or another. But, point being that, um, if we can work with, you know, our neighboring city, this, uh, our Home Depot in our city, I don't know if our other hardware stores or whoever, and let them know that, um, they should inform individuals purchasing, looking to purchase leaf blowers of what the city's regulations are. I think that will go a long way in depressing the number of, or the proliferation, uh, continuous proliferation of gas powered leaf blowers. I do support this initiative, I think it's a good idea. And, um, I'm hoping with the right recommendations and combination of suggestions from my colleagues, uh, we can make sure that we, um, at least by twenty twenty-five, hopefully maybe by twenty twenty-four, if we work diligently enough, um, remove, uh, gas powered leaf blowers from our streets and neighborhoods, thank you.
Thank you, okay, let me, um, uh, call up the speakers. So our first speaker is Emmanuel Gulakian. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Sacramento's energy mandates have not been successful in lowering emissions compared to states with more market-based energy policies that have achieved much greater reductions than California has. Policies like this raise energy costs, impose costly burdens on working class people, and discourage economic activity. This proposed ordinance has many wondering whether policymakers fully understand or even wanna understand the consequences of your decisions. It seems that messing with people's livelihoods has not even been considered. Uh, this just simply appears to amount to major government overreach. Uh, the government should not be in the business in micromanaging people's lives when it comes to using electric or gas powered devices. Personally, I own an electric leaf blower, but this decision was not because of coercion from the government. Uh, policymakers cannot dictate people's buying habits or the evolution of technology by enacting legislation. Uh, when policymakers go down this road, consumers and businesses are the ones that pay the price. Uh, for this specific issue, experts have noted that a three-man landscaping crew would need to carry thirty to forty fully charged batteries to power its equipment during a full day's work. And I mean, when I moved on from V C Rs to DVDs to streaming services, uh, this was not because of incentives or regulations from the government. And it seems that some pushing for measures like this don't even consider that fossil fuels are required to create batteries for electric devices. And this outweighs the impact of using gas powered devices. Uh, batteries cannot be recycled and they end up in landfills. Uh, by contrast, fuel is sustainable, it's easy to access, and when the power is off, you can still use it. You can still, uh, keep medical devices going, you can keep your freezer running. Uh, when your battery is dead, there, there's, uh, nothing on if the power is out. And so, um, I think actual homeowners and landscapers should be listened to. Many have expressed a grave concerns that banning gas powered leaf blowers are impractical and cost prohibitive. Uh, these devices, uh, electric powered leaf blowers, they require, uh, frequent battery charges. Uh, cleaning yards without gas powered equipment is impractical if it's done, you know, by people that do this all day. Businesses would charge more for their services to make up for the increased cost. And so to conclude, uh, this ordinance should be firmly opposed, and, uh, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, uh, and we have one caller?
Mayor, we now have two callers and one more card if you'd like to take the card.
Oh, one more card, yeah, let's take the card first. Okay, we have Alan Durham.
Good evening, Mayor Brotman, members of the council. Um, I'm just asking because I'm a little confused by the presentation. I haven't read the ordinance, I have to admit. And I remember when this was first being discussed months ago, there was a, a very thorough and, um, heated discussion about who do you cite if someone after the effective date is using a gas leaf blower? The homeowner or the landscaping service? And if I am gathering correctly from the presentation tonight, now it's, well, either it could be cited, the homeowner or the landscaping service. And that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if I'm not wrong, that just seems like you're straddling the issue rather than making a firm decision about enforcement, and that's just gonna make it harder to enforce. I mean, when someone calls the city, well, are they gonna cite the landscaper or the homeowner? Is it gonna be consistent, et cetera? So please correct me if I'm wrong in misunderstanding that. But I think if you're gonna pass this ordinance, you should make a decision about, is it the homeowner or the landscape service? Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, yes, we'll be discussing that shortly. Okay, we have two calls, okay. Tom O'Shanacy, Tom?
Yes, very quickly, I, I favor the ban, but are you restricting the use of water? Because the first thing someone's going to do if you tell them, we, you can't use your gas power, they're not gonna go looking for an electric power, they're gonna put a hose and turn on the water, and they're gonna use the water to wash the sidewalk or wash the parking lot. So is there a restriction so that they're not using excess water in place of, of a blower? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller is Mike Mohill, Mike, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Next caller. Hello there?
Yes, Mr. Mohill, you're live, go ahead.
Hi there, uh, yes, good evening, councilmembers, my name is Mike Mohill. Uh, where do we, where do we end and where do we start? Okay, we're talking about leaf blowers today, banning them. Let's see, tomorrow we should do the, uh, lawn mowers, after all, they pollute and make noise. Uh, how about the automobile? How about the motorcycle? How about the scooter? Let's ban everything, after all, everything either pollutes or makes noise. We should ban freeways. Every, everybody who lives along a freeway smells the fumes of the cars. Let's ban cars, let's ban freeways. Let's ban modern living. The human being adjusts to the environment. You know, I'm eighty-one years of age, I've outlived more people than everybody, and I do everything you think you shouldn't do. I think this is a stupid, stupid idea to ban anything. We oughta ban the city council for poor decisions. Let's not, I mean, where are we gonna stop banning, banning, and banning? This whole thing with this leaf blower, please, take it back to the drawing board, look yourself in the mirror and say, you know what? I think I made a stupid mistake, because next thing I know, they're gonna ban me for being a councilperson, thank you.
Okay, alright, so those are all of our callers?
Correct, sir.
Okay, so let's deliberate, um, did you, any, any other comments? Because I, I do have some, but I'll, I'll go last.
I have some.
Councilmember Devine?
I, one thing about the enforce, I, I would, um, um, support, um, the citation going to the property owner. Um, I would, um, oh, I see, it, we already have one, a warning first before we find, because that was one, one of the things I wanted us to make sure we're doing, okay, that, that's good. Um, complaint driven, it is complaint driven. Um, and, um, okay, so I'm, I'm good with, with it, I think the commission recommendations were good. That, those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Satrian.
Uh, the, the one concern I have is the amount for the incentive program. I don't own a home, I don't, I've never had a gardener, so I don't know how much it ends up costing. Um, I did ask for the price, um, of these leaf blowers from staff yesterday, and they noted it's anywhere between two, two to three hundred dollars for commercial. Um, I think as, uh, we're looking at our public benefits program, um, and how we're consolidating, maybe taking a look at, um, how we can increase the amount for this incentive program if the state programs, um, become limiting, uh, within this process. And I think as part of the community outreach, um, I don't know how that notice would, would go out, but I would really like to see something that, um, invites, um, both residents and business owners, um, to check in with City Hall for us to help them, um, switch over. Um, and I would like to know from staff which department, uh, you know, who's gonna take that on? Because this is something I raised during the staff briefing, and, um, I'm interested to hear that as well.
Um, Mayor Brotman, my city council, Councilmember Satrian. Uh, at the initial stage, I would say it'd be the Sustainability Office. Uh, we'll provide that kind of information until we figure out where the enforcement is gonna lie within the city departments.
Do we have the capacity for that kind of assistance?
Well, it depends how many inquiries we get, but, uh, we won't know till we start the program and, and find out. I'd hate to step up, uh, not knowing what kind of, uh, capacity we need.
Okay, I just, again, I thi- I think my biggest hesitation, as much as I support, uh, the intent of this, is, um, for us to be passing these with the understanding that there's gonna be assistance for these workers. And then, you know, time comes and maybe a link that's sent, um, that for a person that has language barriers, that doesn't know how to navigate the system, isn't gonna be able to go and, or either apply for those incentive programs or be able to fill out that paperwork. So if we are doing this, then I would like to see the support system come with that.
Okay, um, if I could, um, unless, Councilmember Kasakian, do you have any, anything? I would like to ask, um, there's, there's kind of the expert, the, the regional, maybe national expert on this subject, sitting in the audience right there, Dan Mabe. I wonder if, uh, I could ask Dan to come up. You there, could you come up, Dan? Uh, if you're okay with it, because there were cer- a few things that I think you can address. I think one of them, there was a, a claim that this is impractical, that thirty to forty batteries, and I don't think that's true, and I would like you to address that, if you could. And then there was also this question of rebates and what the state has and what we should, what, what practically we think we're gonna need to do to help, you know, um, help the landscapers, um, make this transition.
Absolutely.
And also, sorry, and the last thing if you could address is kind of, we're gonna do some pretty, uh, robust education and outreach, that's our plan, and we are, we're, we are hopefully gonna be hiring your firm, I think we're still working on the contract. But, uh, you will be, you will be leading that for us, or your people will be, can you talk about how that's gonna work?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, good evening, uh, councilmembers. Uh, first of all, Dan Mabe, A G Z A, American Green Zone Alliance. I just want to state right out of the gate, I come from the gas industry. I worked with the man of the house where I was a kid. I spent my summers and my weekends doing high volume gardening. I had my own gas business. I converted to electric in the pre-Lithio-Ithic era. We understand workload production rates of gas intimately and electric. Um, while, uh, there's some validity on, on some things, as far as the technology stands today, first of all, um, thirty, forty batteries, that's just not true. Uh, we have specific case studies where we have went out and shadowed gardeners all day long, where they can get by with gas leaf, or electric leaf blowers, certain models with two to three batteries. These are batteries that range from six hundred watt hours up to fourteen hundred watt hours. Uh, different, uh, charge rates, uh, Amperage draws allow, uh, different, uh, brands to charge at higher C rates for quick charging, for standard charging. But as the technology stands today, and again, we are data driven, we have no dog in the fight of, if anything else, but just to help this industry convert and be profitable and get their work done, and then ev- everyone can enjoy the accustomed aesthetic acceptability that, that we're all used to. But as the technology stands today, the electric leaf blowers, the top models, can get a full day's work with two to three batteries, and there is an acceptable battery to gas tank ratio. Um, if there's folks here, uh, when we get together with the city, which we're almost there with you, we're going to conduct workshops, we can bring such models, we can bring the gas models, and we can let people test them in actual, uh, maintenance situations, and we will take the, the gray out of it. It will just be unequivocal, black and white, here it is. Now, as far as the economics go, yes, the electric equipment is substantially higher cost at the, the, the time of procurement. However, we do have California Core, um, and we under, and we are actually working with the state and the Core Program as well. And then there's South Coast A Q M D, and then you have the trifecta, you have your own, uh, Public Works. Those are three really solid, um, stackable programs that can bring the cost of these electric appliances down substantially to the point where they would be about the same as their gas counterparts. Now, one thing is this, when you operate a gas leaf blower as it stands today, you're using synthetic two-stroke oil, you're doing the regular routine maintenance of one or two tune-ups per year, you're going to be spending anywhere from a dollar twenty to a dollar fifty per hour to operate that tool. The electric counterparts, depending on the cost per kilowatt hour, you're going to, at the worst case scenario, be operating them at twenty-two cents an hour. If you're doing dry hardscape, using it at a medium-high setting, you could be operating as low as nine and a half cent, cents an hour. So there is significant savings on the backend. With the programs that are in place today, when you're able to procure these pieces of equipment similar to the cost of gas, then you're looking at a very, um, equitable and reasonable proposition. Uh, lastly, I just wanna say the city of Glendale, you have already started out on the right foot. You did not say, do as I say, not as I do. You have converted your entire city almost to electric operations under the certification. And, and you didn't just do it and say we did it, it's under a certification that's verified, that's one. So you're setting the example, you're setting the tone for your constituents and your community. Second, we have engaged over forty-five cities nationwide on this subject and others that have to do with lawn and garden maintenance. And I can tell you that in fifteen states we've engaged, there's three distinct approaches. One is a punitive approach, the other's indifferent, and then the other is supportive. I can tell you, I read through, uh, the sample ordinance, the work we've been conducting with your city already, and the work that we feel we're gonna be doing with you, you are taking. you are taking what we call the supportive approach. So I will just leave my comments there, and then if there's any specific questions, I can answer them tonight, and then we are going to be available to you to answer anything else that has to do with just the raw workload feasibility between gas and electric, and it will be from an unbiased, data-driven source.
Councilmember Devine.
Thank you. You know, I suggested earlier that we try to speed this up to one year for the outreach and education. Is that possible? Is it a good idea?
I think two years. You're a big city. We do specific outreach and language of comfort, and I really think we have to look at a long-game approach to make sure when we look back after fines will ensue, that everything has been done to ensure that the proprietors that are beautifying the homes and properties in this city, we've made that effort. Now, I can say this, we can go at it hard for a year and assess, and maybe you can leave an off-ramp where after a year it can be assessed, and then you can make a decision from there.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, you mentioned demonstration outreach. How do you do that? Shouldn't that be done with the actual gardeners, the landscapers? And how does that happen?
Yeah, no, we do do that. So there's a two-pronged approach. The city reaching the property owners, and then we are going to work with the Sustainability Office to set up what we call field workshops. We do them all the time. We've done nearly 15, 16 of them with the city of South Pasadena. We've done one with the city of Pasadena, and we're earmarked for five more. I'm on a plane every other week going to different states, conducting these workshops. We invite all the apex manufacturers who have the best warranties and the best equipment, and they bring the equipment there. Sometimes we'll just bring our own, and what we do is we allow the workers to pick it up, to try it on, to actually use it in a realistic maintenance situation. And then we break down all of the attributes between the two different technologies, and we go into how to make the electric technology endure and successful.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Satchin, did you have any other comments?
I think from your comments, it made me feel like these, this equipment's more expensive. How much are we looking at?
It is. It can be twice, three times as much, okay, than their gas counterparts. So an Echo PB770T, which is a two-stroke popular leaf blower, it retails for about $600. And then its electric counterpart can go up to $1,800, up to $2,200.
That's without the rebates?
That's without the rebates, correct. With the rebates, with the rebates through California Core, with the Air District, it's going to bring the cost of an electric blower, two batteries, two chargers, in roughly about $900.
So where did staff get $200 to $300 on these?
This was looking at kind of some of the prices on the California Core website, because they show you how much the rebate is and kind of what the cost for some of the equipment is. And some equipment can be $200, $300, and some can be much more expensive, depending on how big it is.
There's a range for California Core. Now that I'm hearing that, the cost to the end user could be anywhere from $2, $3, up to $900 for an electric system that's commercial. But it's still putting them in the range of where they would be with their gas and then the cost of operation benefit, even if you're purchasing the most expensive off the program, you should have a ROI eight months, eight to 10 months.
So you're breaking even in eight to 10 months, you're saying?
If you're able to participate in the rebate program and get it through the program at that reduced rate.
Because the upfront cost is higher, but then the operational cost is much lower. That's the reason for that. And then with the rebates, we're getting to that point where they are comparable.
Yeah, I mean, there's some systems and models there where, yes, they are comparable, and then there's some that are a little bit more expensive. But again, it's substantially higher, and especially in the state of California, it is going to be the highest cost to operate lawn and garden equipment, especially two-stroke equipment that requires two-stroke oil. And you have, it's an additive. So if you're paying $4.5 per gallon, you're going to add maybe a dollar, I'm going to be conservative, $1.80 up to $3 more a gallon when you put the additive in the field mix.
Okay. So I, do you have questions?
I don't really have questions, but I wanted to thank you, Dan, for these answers and for all the support that you've given us over, actually, probably now three or four years, as we've been going down this path. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And if there's any specific questions to follow up with, please direct them to the Sustainability Office and Ms. Harris, and then we have, again, those case studies that we can present at a separate time. Thank you.
Thank you. And from my point of view, I would say, you know, in terms of some of the things we're having to decide, I would support the idea of a one-year grace period before it becomes unlawful with this idea of an off-ramp. I know we have said that we are going to have staff come back after a year and report back to us on the education outcomes. And I think at that point is when we can have a decision point where we say, you know, let's extend that grace period for another six months, another one year, whatever we choose to do, or let's let it take its course. That's what I would like to see. As far as the citation and where it goes, I mean, I think what council's been saying, I think we've all been kind of saying that really we want to enforce, when it comes to the time of enforcement, we want to enforce on property owners, not on the landscape businesses, especially not on the mom-and-pops. That's not where we want to be doing our enforcement. So I would support either just enforcing on property owners, or if there's some mechanism where we can say, well, only, if we're enforcing on businesses, it's only going to be large landscape businesses with more than X number of employees. I could see some kind of formula that I'd be comfortable with, but if that's going to be too complicated or legally questionable, then I'm personally okay with just having property owners as the responsible party for any enforcement that we do. Those are the, those are the two points that I have.
Okay, well, I, with respect to the one year, I'm not comfortable with that. I would not be voting in support if it's one year, so.
Councilmember Kusakian?
I'm fine with the one year.
Okay, Councilmember Dejarion?
Do we want to say property owners or residents? What if I'm leasing a house and I hire a bootleg gardener?
Mayor, councilmembers, if I may recommend, I would probably say property owners. Typically, in a rental situation, it is the owner who is maintaining that landscaping. What I would also add is that this is consistent with how we apply most of our other ordinances and codes. We usually go to the property owner, not the business in question.
Okay.
Mayor Brown, if I, if I may, the other alternative would be for us to do two-year and then have the report come back one year. We've done that in the past. And at that time, decide whether or not we want to implement it at that time.
I understand. I would, my preference would be a one-year with a view at that time, and then we can extend it or not.
Which is, I think, exactly what she's saying. We go hard for one year, then we look at that, what progress we've made, are residents ready to move into the next phase of enforcement or not? And if not, then we go for another year of education.
But the ordinance would say 2020, it would be 2024, not 2025, but we know we have that option to extend it.
So how would the notices look? We were talking about being proactive, so if somebody were to complain. And with the way that you want to have it written, that notice would say that it would be going into effect 2024, but then come 2024, this council decides that it's going to extend for a year?
I mean, I think that's better than saying 2025, and then after a year, we say we want to pull it back. So I would rather say an earlier time and then extend it potentially, than say a later time and then accelerate it. I think that would be worse. Yeah, yeah. I think just in terms of kind of the optics and the messaging, to say that it's a year, to me feels better, and knowing that, you know, we'll go hard, we'll try to achieve that, and if we can't, we'll...
But none of our residents know that this is in front of us today.
I know, that's why we have a year.
It takes six months for them to get an RFP out and bring it back to us. So I don't think that...
Yeah, this is for introductions.
There'll be another by that D ordinance.
So you want me to move this?
Somebody would like to introduce.
I introduce the ordinance with the changes.
So just so we're clear, that what you're, Councilmember Devine, what you're introducing is to revise it so that it would be effective, or the enforcement would be effective in a year? And let me just ask this...
My first 2024.
Okay, so just so we're clear, this will be adopted on August 8th, which means it will be effective until September 8th, so that is like 10 months.
Well, can we make it one year?
You can make it one year. That's what I was going to suggest, if you want to do a year, do a year.
We do want to do a year.
Yeah. And then we'll make the change regarding subsection B, which would state that it's, you know, it's upon that date or until the end of any extended public education program authorized by the city manager, whichever is later, and...
In the enforcement, are we in agreement generally?
Property owner?
Property owner, yes.
And then that additional change for, or later?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
As introduced.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, what is next?
Next item is APB, Community Development, regarding consideration of 45-day moratorium on new firearms retailers. B1, Introduction of an Interim Urgency Ordinance prohibiting new firearms retailers.
Mr. Galan?
So, Mr. Mayor, Member of City Council, this item is brought to you per your request for council's request for a consideration of a moratorium on new firearm retailers in the city. And the staff report, as well as the presentation, will cover federal, state, and local laws in addition to details on the current status of gun retailer activity in the city. With that, I'll turn it over to Bradley Calvert, our Director of Community Development, for the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. A few months ago, City Council requested that we bring forth the consideration of either a potential moratorium or a CUP process regarding firearms and ammunition retailers in the city of Glendale. This is largely in response to several mass shootings that we had seen, especially at a local level. So what we're bringing forward is some information on the number of local gun retailers here in the city, how we relate to our surrounding peers, some other additional considerations, and then your options in terms of moving forward with a moratorium, or if you were to choose an alternative path. Very brief presentation, as the city manager acknowledged, just kind of giving some background. Any potential firearms dealer in the city of Glendale must obtain approval from federal, state, and local levels. That includes a license from the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives, ATF. You know, having that license is subject to audits. California, you must also get a certificate of eligibility from the DOJ. That also comes with potential audits as well. And only through that process can you obtain a license through the city of Glendale, which is administered by our Chief of Police. For firearms dealers, they are permitted by right in our C2, C3, CR, CH, IMU, and IMUR zones. They do have to meet all zoning requirements. They do also have to obtain their approval from the Chief of Police for a revocable permit for retail sales of a concealable weapon. So even if they are permitted outright, they still have to be able to get that approval from the Chief of Police before moving forward. Current status, your report states that there are six licensed firearm dealers in Glendale. We've done a little bit more digging, we actually found that there are actually seven in the city of Glendale, so we did miss that one by one. So this report does update those facts and figures that has been corrected from our staff report. The first one was licensed in 1991, the most recent were two of them in 2021. Police has informed us, and you've kind of seen that highlighted in the report, we don't have any data that indicates any specific pattern for calls of services or crime around firearm dealers or in the relationship specifically to those firearm dealers. The city does also offer several programs by the police department to try to curb gun violence and remove illegal guns from the street. Our Chief Manny Sid is here to provide any update or additional information on that if you do request, but primarily, the focus of this presentation is regarding land use and a zoning decision. Currently, there are seven, as mentioned, updated in this PowerPoint presentation, licensed firearm dealers in the city of Glendale. That puts us at about one per 27,500. We are a distant second to Burbank, but we are second amongst the four cities, amongst our peers that we looked at. Pasadena having three or one per every 47,339, Los Angeles having 36, but that equating to one for every 110,277, given the sheer size of Los Angeles. Introducing a moratorium provides staff the opportunity to investigate any alternatives that council may direct here this evening, if that is your desire, including a conditional use permit that would give us opportunity to identify what's the appropriate kind of response and contextual relationship for a firearms retailer. Do we want to continue to allow that in all of those zones? We could return in 45 days with a report, and at that point, you could choose to extend that moratorium by another 10 months and 15 days. If you were just to direct staff to start moving forward with investigating and potentially working towards a conditional use permit without a moratorium, do note that that is something we would have to try to fit into our work plan, that is not something we would be able to move quite quickly on. And that does mean that there could be opportunities where other firearms dealers, potential, who get licensed, could pursue opening up a store in any of those by-right locations. That concludes my presentation, as I mentioned, very brief. Happy to answer any questions, and Chief Sid is also here, that he can also speak to some of the statistics and numbers.
Do my colleagues have any questions?
Was the one addition, one additional retailer, was that the Big Five, or was that another?
No, no, that was one additional one that we had found, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure I understand what the problem is here, specifically to Glendale. I don't think, the report says we've had no problems with any of the retailers. It's a land use decision. I understand that there's a national debate on this, and party politics get involved, and emotions, and everything else. I just don't see what the problem is that we're trying to solve in the city of Glendale. I also ask if there's any constitutional issues in light of the Bruin case. I think the court said, you know, that there's issues of historically, historical tradition, a firearm regulation is the limit on the type of restrictions you could place on gun purchase and gun ownership. So that might run afoul here. I don't know if we started this before the Bruin case came, but I think we need to, we should look at that and get an answer.
Mr. City Attorney, want to just respond to that?
Sure. So, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, our office looked at that issue as it relates to Bruin, and, you know, that's largely a case affecting the ownership and use of firearms, not necessarily one that affects zoning decisions on where they may be located. And since the moratorium is not necessarily banning them forever, it's a temporary restriction until such time as the city can look at additional regulations. Our view was it doesn't fly in the face of Bruin, and that would be a permissible regulation. As additional regulations are proposed, we would look at those in light of Bruin and see whether or not they pose any risk under that Supreme Court case. So that's speaking only to our temporary moratorium? Correct. Not, you would reevaluate it if there's any permanent... Sure. Again, though, just generally, locational requirements and operational requirements as it relates to the sale of firearms, would, we think would be viewed differently than restrictions on the possession, ownership, or use of firearms, which were the issues that were before the court in Bruin. But again, we'll look, each time a regulation is put forth, we'll look at that and examine it and provide our analysis on it. Did we have this discussion before at council, or is this the first? On this? No. No.
I remember...
Maybe it was in my mind. I was arguing it against someone, but, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Casacchio?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, first of all, thank you, staff, for this report. I think that those state, calling it a moratorium isn't fully reflective. I know how, why you're presenting it as such, or I can understand why you're presenting it as such, because you need to have this moratorium, as we have this discussion. The reason that this issue was in part brought up is because, you know, there are gun shops. We have many gun store operators who are fine contributing citizens of our community, well-known individuals who support a lot of charitable organizations that run appropriate and well-run shops and operations. But there was, obviously during COVID, because of stress, you know, there was uptick in gun purchases because of civil unrest and whatever other justifications people used, increasing crime. And ultimately, there was one store or a place that was open that was close to a school, according to some of the concerned parents in the neighborhood. And I know I received some questions about whether it was appropriate for it to be so close to a school. And it got me to think whether, you know, we put limits, and cities put limits on a number of things and a number of types of operations in their city. So if a city, for instance, like in this neighboring city of Pasadena, they can limit the number of cannabis licenses for distribution and sale in their city, why can't a city limit the number of gun shops in its jurisdiction? This would not be a ban on gun sales or gun purchases, but it would also allow us to limit what we want our city to have, what type of businesses we want to attract. And for that reason, I think that a conditional use of CUP process, studying where gun shops are located, whether there's necessarily a need for so many of them in a particular area, or the impact they may have in a community, is appropriate. We can get into the national debate, although I don't, well, I'd rather not, because as you mentioned, Councilmember Najarian, this is an issue that oftentimes gets headlines nationally. Unfortunately, our national leaders don't tend to do much about it because of special interests that have co-opted some of our leaders in Washington and have paralyzed them into a situation where we, as a country, are more comfortable with school shootings than we are about limiting our own ability as adults to responsibly own firearms and use them in an appropriate way for sport, and perhaps unfortunately, in self-defense. There's a number of studies we can go over as to what households that have guns have a propensity for increased use of guns for whether it's suicide or gun violence against individuals. I don't want to get into that debate. What I do want to see is have a city where we allow opportunities for individuals who want to purchase guns to purchase them and limit the proliferation of gun shops when we have just had two new ones open in 2021. So we don't have a city that's comprised mostly of gun stores.
Thank you. Any other comments, or does somebody want to introduce the?
I have a comment I'd like to make. I am in support of the moratorium. I would like to have staff with the report bring back different ways. I, you know, in looking at the numbers, it seems like we have as many gun dealers as we do ice cream shops. And if it continues on this route, like, that's not the city that I'm looking for to live in. And so I'm not looking to ban the sale of guns in our city, but I am looking to limit that and where those dealers would be. So for the moratorium, so.
Okay. We just need an introduction of the ordinance.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay, introduced by?
I think it's a good one.
Councilmember Divine. Okay. All right, what is our next, oh, going on to our hearing. Is that right? Yes.
Yes, 9A is hearings, Community Development Regarding Appeal of Design Review Board's Approval of DRB Case Number PDR 221249, Located at 3967 San Augustine Drive. One would be a motion to sustain the Design Review Board's decision to approve the design review application with conditions. Two, motion to continue the matter directing City Attorney to draft findings reversing the Design Review Board's decision and denying the project.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Brotman, members of City Council, I'm just going to go directly to Roger Kiesel, our senior planner, who's been working on this appeal and the DRB case.
All right, good evening, Mayor Brotman, members of the City Council. The hearing before you this evening is an appeal of the Design Review Board's approval of a demolition of an existing single-family house, and then in conjunction with the construction of a new proposed single-family house. The site is at 3967 San Augustine Drive. And let me just briefly go over with you the project. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm, I'll open the hearing formally at 8:05. Okay, would you like me to do the presentation, or? Yes, please. Okay, let me... All right, one more time. Okay, there we go. Thank you. All right. The subject site currently contains a single-story, 2,123 square-foot, single-family residence with an attached two-car garage. The house was built in 1982. As I mentioned, the house is proposed to be demolished, and in its place, a new two-story, 4,872 square-foot residence with an attached three-car garage is proposed. The site, the project site, is approximately 17,500 square feet, zoned R1R with the FAR District 3, and is located on the corner of San Augustine and Wendover Road. This is sort of an area site plan. The subject site is shown, outlined in blue, and the footprints of nearby houses are also shown. The next slide, this slide shows the front of the residence, the existing residence. San Augustine Drive is in the foreground, and Wendover Road is to the right. They're labeled. But you can, you can see the existing residence behind the trees or a setback. The site plan of the property shows the subject site outlined in the black line, the property line. The residence proposed is shown in green. Doesn't quite really show up well in this slide. The driveway is shown in brown. There is an existing fountain in the middle of the driveway that is blue. And the driveway leads from the property onto San Augustine. Real briefly, the south or the front elevation of the house, the rear elevation of the house, the east elevation of the house, which faces Wendover. And then finally, the west elevation, which faces properties along Karen Lynn Drive. Various renderings of the proposed residence, floor plan, first floor and second floor, materials proposed. And then summary of the Design Review Board meeting. December, on December 8th, 2022, the DRB voted 3-0 to approve the proposed project with some conditions. During this board discussion, members acknowledged that the, that construction, nearby construction, can be difficult for those adjacent to it. They believe that the proposed project was consistent with the hillside design guidelines and blends with the surrounding neighborhood. They did not believe that privacy was an issue, given the modest size of the balcony proposed on the residence. There were several board discussion points that did result in conditions of approval. And these included a reduction in the size of the driveway and incorporating permeable paving within it, restudying the location of the stone cladding material, requiring darker-colored lintels, and then finally, restudying the window proportions in the master bathroom. There was also consideration to distinguish the porch openings from the garage openings. An appeal was filed regarding the board's approval of the project on December 21st, 2022. The appellant cited four concerns. The first was that they did not believe due process requirements were followed. The second was they believed that a study of the nearby house, nearby hillside, or a SOAS report should have been required as a condition of approval. They believe that that privacy of adjoining neighbors should have been protected with regard to the massiveness of the project. And then finally, the proposed residence, they believed was inconsistent with the Glendale neighborhood. I'm going to pause here. I can continue with sort of a summary of their arguments and conclude, or I can just stop here, and you all can proceed with questions, or open the public hearing, whichever you like.
Okay, well, we've opened the public hearing, but let me see. I imagine we've all, you know, read the materials. So let me see if my colleagues have questions for staff. And then, at that point, we'll go into the presentations from the applicant and the appellant.
I have one question for staff. And that's about, you know, I was up there, and there are a lot of trees, front, back, side, all over. I mean, it's going to practically conceal the entire house. Are any of those trees going to be destroyed or cut down?
No, they will not. The, there's an existing pad on the site, the house, the property's already developed. That pad will not increase in size. The trees on the property are kind of outside the pad.
Okay, all right, great. That's my question for right now.
Okay, other questions?
It's okay, I'll pass for now.
I have one. If you can go back to the proportions for the bathroom window?
The window? Okay.
Can you walk us through the details of that?
Sure. Let me go through...
And the reasoning behind?
So at the front elevation, the elevation that faces San Augustine, the board felt that the, sort of the three windows on the second floor... Do you all know where I'm referring to? I'm not sure how else to...
Yeah.
Yeah. Those three, those three windows were really sort of out of proportion compared with the other windows on, on the elevation and sort of within that element of the house itself. So that's, that generated the condition to restudy those windows.
So, yeah, I mean, each of those windows, I see are different sizes. I, and I'm not an architect or a designer. I mean, the staff. I don't know why they wanted the three windows, but I'm trying to, and I guess I would pose that question to them. When is their turn? But I'm trying to understand why we would, if, I mean, if it's not part of the architectural style of a building or the home.
Sure. Initially, when staff reviewed the project and wrote the staff report, I don't think we identified that as a concern. But the board, in their discussion, thought that maybe a reduction in, in the sizes or separation of those three windows would just improve the appearance.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So I think now we will ask the appellant to come forward. Is that Clint Feddersen? And if you could tell us, will you be the only one speaking for the appellant's side?
I don't think so, Mayor Brotman. My wife would like to say a few words, and she's filled out a speaker's card. And I'm also honored that a couple of our neighbors have come, and I believe...
Right, others can speak. I'm just saying, as far as, you know, the appeal itself, we're going to give you a certain amount of time to kind of make your case. So that will, that will be you, and then other people can, you know, get their three minutes to say whatever, you know, whatever they feel about it. So how much time do you think you're going to need to, you know, spell out the case for the appeal?
I would not require more than five minutes, I'm sure.
Okay, so let's give you, let's give you five minutes. I mean, we can give you a little more if you need it. But let's start with five minutes.
But first, do you have a copy of my letter that was attached to the appeal? Because the crux of my concern was that it was never addressed in a public hearing.
Yes, we all received that letter.
Oh, wonderful, thank you.
Okay, so please go ahead.
Thank you. So councilmembers Casache, Desatryan, Divine, and Najarian, and Mayor Brotman, thank you for hearing me. It's an honor to be heard by you. In my day job, I am a judge for the Workers' Compensation Appeals Board. It's my job to hear people. I spent all day today in Van Nuys, hearing people and their concerns. And so I'm as concerned with this process as I am with the outcome, and I'm very pleased that you're hearing me, and I thank you. I feel comfortable here. Three of you happen to share last names with my colleagues. There's Judge Frida Najarian in Long Beach. There is Judge Lynn Divine in Van Nuys, one of my colleagues with whom I received honors from the Armenian Bar Association five years ago. And then there's the former presiding judge of the Van Nuys, WCAB, David Brotman, my former boss and mentor.
I like that.
You have to recuse yourselves all of a sudden.
Well, in any, any event, I'm sure you're not related, but it was an interesting coincidence. And in another coincidence, in addition to feeling like I wasn't heard at the public hearing due to the timing, probably no intention on the part of the Design Review Board, I had to file the appeal, and I was astonished to learn that the cost of the appeal is about the cost of an electric leaf blower. And whether it's as good an investment remains to be seen. But I went ahead and did that because at Notre Dame Law School, they imbued in me the notion that rights are priceless and that this was worth being heard. So I want to be heard on the three points that I made. And I think Mr. Kiesel did an outstanding job of presenting the property. But unfortunately, the design pictures of the property presented out of context. It creates the illusion that the property is in a vacuum somewhere, surrounded by limitless boundaries. And in reality, it's in the context of a hillside with a precipice of crumbling materials that concern us a great deal. That's point one we made in the letter. And secondly, it involves a balcony that juts toward our pool and kitchen and backyard that we like very much. And that's our second point. And the third point is that all of our neighborhood has homes that are mostly one-story, at least the Glendale side that you can see. You can't see the La Cañada side. And these homes blend very gracefully into the hillside, even the ones that have been remodeled. And we're concerned that it will be visible from all sides of the house, including the front of the house, as shown by the pictures that we included with our letter. So we want to have those things addressed. Ideally, there would be some kind of examination or study of the hillside. I know our neighbors, and I'm sure they're not doing this to vex or annoy us, and I don't mean to be a nimby, and even though it is our backyard, that's why I'm here. But they shared with me a soil sample study, because we did meet with them and tried to resolve this. But that soil sample was five years ago. It was just a three-foot-deep sample of the soil on their property. And it didn't look at the lay of the land, which is what concerns us. This precipice underneath where they're going to place more than literally a million pounds of construction, not to mention drainage issues, and I'd like to have an opinion on that. I'd like to know if it's necessary to have the balcony that juts out and as many windows facing us, including two windows on the garage. And I'd also like to know how it fits into the neighborhood because it will be the prominent feature monument at the top of San Augustine Drive, and it will define the neighborhood in a way that concerns me. And those are really my points, and I won't belabor any further, especially on your birthday, Judge Brot, I mean...
Not Judge, not Judge.
Mayor Brotman. I almost called you Judge Brotman, you know. I was mentored by a presiding judge with your name. So, but you are the judge tonight, as are your colleagues. So at this point, I'll ask if you have any questions. If not, I will conclude my statement with what I've said.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions at this point? Okay, but if we do... Okay, but if we do, we'll have an opportunity to have you back and, and give a rebuttal or answer any questions we have.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So with that, we will ask the applicant to come forward. Is that, that's our normal procedure?
Right, the applicant after the, the appellant, correct.
Yeah, so the applicant come forward and maybe respond to some of the points you heard and tell us why you think the, the appeal should not be upheld.
And please state your name for the record.
Yes, sir, my name is Arment Tuntunjan. I'm the architect working on the project. Good evening, Mayor Brotman, good evening, council members, thank you for having me today. I would like to start off by reading a few excerpts of a letter I prepared for the planning department regarding our project's compliance with the hillside design guidelines. The design guidelines focus on three things: site planning, mass and scale, along with design and detailing. These are the guidelines the planning department uses to recommend projects to the design review board. As you may know, our project was approved by the board on December 8th of last year. So with that being said, I'm going to just continue forward with some of those excerpts I mentioned. Our property is located at 3967 San Augustine Drive, on a corner lot with a street front facing San Augustine Drive in Glendale and the street side facing Wendover Road in La Cañada. The property has four abutting neighbors. The neighbors to the south fall within the city of Glendale and are smaller in parcel size and more rectilinear in shape. Our, our lot better resembles the lots found to the north in La Cañada due to the larger size and irregular shape. If you take a look at the site plan Roger was showing, you'll notice that our property is very unique. It fits better with the La Cañada neighborhood. The majority of the proposed residential footprint matches the existing footprint. We're not going to be, where the house sits existing is where the new house will be sitting. We're not increasing the pad, we're going to keep it the same. Our goal is not to encroach further into the hillside, so we were very adamant on keeping that the same. So I think that, that in itself is a move where planning department really liked that we didn't increase this, so by just keeping the same footprint, it was, I think it was, I think it was a, it was a good idea. So, the majority, so the architectural styles in the neighborhood of Glendale and La Cañada vary as modern and traditional homes can be seen. Architectural elements such as gables, hair roofs, stone and stucco material wall finishes are prevalent. Our proposed design will have gable roofs visible from the street, glazing and rectilinear volumes. The wall finishes will include smooth stucco and stone. Our proposed residence will be 28 feet two high from the finished grade, significantly less than the maximum allowable 35-feet height limit. The two-story portion of the home will be, will also be setback approximately 90 feet from San Augustine Drive, significantly greater than the minimum required 15 feet. So that's, that's, we could have put the property, we could have bought it right along the street, but we kept it, we didn't encroach into the hillside. The larger setback allows one to view the two-story home from a further distance, minimizing the perceived size of the home from the public right of way. Much of the home will not be visible from the street due to the elevation difference between the property and San Augustine and Wendover. This elevation difference, coupled with the existing heavy vegetation found on both sides of the street, make the home feel secluded. One can clearly only see the home from the public right of way through the driveway opening. The driveway opening is located at the outskirts of the city of Glendale. Many residents will not be traversing this area, let alone see the residence in close proximity with other homes. So those Google Street View images, if you guys take a look at that, the property is covered with landscaping. It's really right where the driveway is, where you could really see it. If you just drive along Wendover or San Augustine, it's pretty secluded. So as far as like mass and scale, it's pushed back 90 feet. It's not going to be intruding. We did, we, we played with the elevation, so we did, we did a bunch of things to meet the hillside design requirements. To respond to our neighbor's concern regarding privacy, I think the property is elevated. There's an elevation difference. It's because of natural topography. That's not in my hands. I didn't create the land, it was the hand of God, so I think it's something where we really can't change, whether we had a one-story house or a two-story house, or even if we decide to just gut the property and have nothing there. If you simply stand there, you could look down, it's just because of how the property is. So whether you have one story or two story, doesn't really matter, even zero stories, you're still going to be able to look down. And also responding to the neighbor's concern about the hillside, the typical process is once you get design review approval, you move on to building and safety. So during the building and safety process, you hire, you hire a geotechnical engineer. The engineer does soil samples and they write a report. No engineer will stamp a drawing or put their name on anything if they don't feel comfortable. We're definitely going to go through that process. The report that was shown was for something five years ago, and they never went through with that project. With this project, we're going to have further samples, and I could, I could tell you, no engineer will approve this if they don't feel comfortable with it.
Okay, one, one second.
Sure.
Is there more time?
Mayor, there's been five minutes and 30 seconds at this point.
I was almost done. I think that's pretty much it. If I didn't mention, I mentioned, I covered two of their concerns. I also, I summarized the hillside requirements. If there's anything else you guys like, I could, I could address, be glad to.
Okay, if we have questions, we'll call you back.
Great, very well. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, we have some additional speakers, three minutes each, starting with Natasha Feddersen.
Good evening, City Councilor, Mayor. It's my pleasure to present in front of you, and happy birthday, by the way. I really have a few concerns, and it goes with our appeal. My concern is how the Glendale Design Review Board handled this issue. We put in our letter much in advance, and it's never was addressed. Not during the hearing, we never got any voice back or anything to reflect on our concerns. So it looks to us that it was completely ignored, and all the decisions that were made, they were, we were not part of it, even though we're the closest neighbors to the site. So, speaking of that, because of this issue, we had to file an appeal and pay this, I think outrageous amount that my husband told about, to be heard at least for the first time, and I consider us speaking here to be heard for the first time, and because of that, I'm asking the board, the city councilor, to consider, to reimburse us the fees, because we never were heard in the first place. That's my first point. Now, going back to the appeal, I would like to address all three issues, but quickly. So we're living at this residence for 20 years, and when we bought it, we learned a lot of things about our residence, and our main concern is our hill, and the hill is very steep. And earlier today, I picked a few samples, exactly six, because my husband said we're going to present to six, five people plus. And just to let you know, the whole hill is made of this, and it already has crumbles. If you want to study it, great, but I would like the city engineer to study our hillside very carefully, because every year, we have tons of debris falling from this hill, and I'm not sure that eight feet away from the hillside would be sufficient to, to build a two, three, three-car garage. On top of it, regarding our privacy, that's our second concern. I am a very visual person. So, while our neighbors are planning to upscale their bedroom views to our backyard, our windows, our pool area, all our backyard, all our life, basically, we're going to be upscale to this view. I took liberty of doing a little bit of drop project. I want to show it to everybody, so you can see it. This is our backyard, with this much of building visible to us, windows and everything. So before, we just had greenery, and I'll show it to you how it looks before.
How, how much longer do you need?
A few more minutes. This is what's our view when we bought the house, and with all this stuff now being there, going, figure out, are we going to lose money when we're selling this house? I don't know. You tell me that. And isn't, if it's not invasion of privacy, what is this? I would like you to address this issue. On the third...
Your time is up, you had three minutes.
Quickly, it's a part of the appeal, quickly. Again, I'm a visual person. This is the side view of the hill. If it's not, I mean, is it, is it visible to everybody from the street?
Okay, okay, we, your time is up, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I was just going to say, those are going to be relied upon, they have to be part of the record, so you have to leave them with the clerk's office, and we will return them after the, after the hearing.
Okay.
Here, you have to give them, give them to the clerk. Okay, we have another speaker, Daniel Besen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to have my voice heard. Haven't done this before, but, but thank you for that opportunity. Daniel Besen, I live at 3944 Karen Lynn Drive, so for some context, it's across the street from the appellant, down one house, down the hill, one house. It's, my opinion, the house as proposed is simply out of proportion for the character of the neighborhood. And when I say the neighborhood, to me, I'm defining it as the Glendale neighborhood. The house is in Glendale, and I think the, the impact should be evaluated on the impact to the Glendale residents and the Glendale people, and rather than a blended neighborhood of La Cañada and Glendale, which from reading the paperwork is, is what I believe was used. I think if that was done, if it was focused on a Glendale neighborhood, then I think what the city council, I think what you'd find is virtually all the houses are one-story, and all of them are, virtually all, the majority of them, the vast majority, one-story, 2,000 to 2,500 square feet. This, what's being proposed, is almost 5,000 square feet, it's two-story. The representative for the applicant stated that it wasn't really visible, is very secluded from San Augustine and Wendover. Very true. He did not say that it was very, because he didn't mention Karen Lynn Drive, because it's very visible from Karen Lynn Drive, and that's where your Glendale residents reside. We can see the house from our front yard and even our backyard, and we're just a one-level, one-level, one-level house. So, so to me, the house built as it's designed, or as it's planned, is, or the plans itself make it an outlier. If the house is built as designed, it will become an outlier in reality. So I respectfully ask that the appeal be upheld. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have, so City Clerk?
Mayor, we have no callers.
No calls? Okay, so we've heard all of our speakers. We, I guess we, we would have opportunity for rebuttal, right?
Yeah, you can allow rebuttal for the appellant. Apologist, you can allow rebuttal for the appellant.
Okay, before we do that, do any of my colleagues have questions? Yeah, may, maybe we can, well, if you have questions for staff?
Hi, Mayor.
Oh, okay, could you put in a, state your name?
Oh, hi, my name is Avides Tashan, I'm the homeowner.
Okay, and when you're finished speaking, please just put in a card, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to address a few things that was talked about just now. You know, as far as the size of the house is concerned, the property is much bigger than the properties on Karen Lynn, so that's one of the reasons why we were able to build that size of a house. So that's one to address. I also want to address regarding, during the design review board process in December, we had another neighbor that was there to, who, who was not, I guess, agreed with the construction. So, so a lot of the things that were brought forth by the other neighbor were also, are the same issues that were, that are being brought up by Mr. Fedderman or the Fedderman family, and except, with the exception of the garage being built on the hillside. So, so the, in regards to the design review board not addressing the issues that they're concerned about, they were addressed. I actually wrote that, laid that out, out on the letter that I provided to you. There should be a letter from me, so I would encourage you to read that. As far as the five-year-old sample, we got a permit to build the garage before we decided to build the house, and that's the, that's the report that I shared with my neighbor. And as far as the crumbling is concerned, yes, there is a lot of crumble on the hillside. However, the house, the property itself, is sitting on a bedrock, so when you do a sample and you go down five feet below the ground, you, you hit on a rock, so that's the reason why the soil engineer signed off on us to build that garage there. And a design review board was not needed at the time, and it's, I don't think it still is necessary. We got the permit to build it, we just decided to wait and then do the whole project altogether, which was reviewed during the design review process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Desatryan?
Sir, if you may, do you mind coming back?
Oh, yes, sir, yes, please.
I have a question about the master bathroom windows. I know that the design review board said for us to, for you to re-study that as one of the conditions. Is there a reason why you chose that design? Are you okay with re-studying it? So I ask this because I have a particular love for certain kinds of windows, okay? And I, I really like light coming into, to homes. I think a lot of times when I see recommendations for that to be downsized or for window types to be changed, that changes the look and the kind of light that comes into a home. I wanted, I wanted to hear from you what the thought process was, because that window set did look different than the rest, but...
I think it was just how the architect designed it initially, and we brought it forth to the design review board, and we're, we're open to making some changes, if, if that's something that the design review board proposed at the time. Once we had, we had the final approval, we were going to make some changes to, to make sure we were in line with the recommendations. But, I mean, it wasn't, you know, it was just, that, that was the initial design that we proposed at the time.
You seem to be a young family. Where have you been living all this time?
Oh, same location. We've been living there for 10 years now.
Okay.
And we have three kids growing up, so that's why, that's one of the reasons why we decided to, you know, expand our house, because it's, you know, you know, that's the reason.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Devine?
This is, not, not for him.
Okay, you can sit, thank you.
He mentioned that one of the neighbors spoke at the DRB. Did the Feddersens get a chance to speak at the DRB hearing? You didn't have...
Let's have staff answer the question.
Are you asking?
Yes, Feddersen.
Mr. Kiesel?
Or, yeah, Mr. Kiesel. Did they not speak at the DRB hearing?
No, they did not speak at the DRB hearing. I believe they had a commitment, they had a flight, I believe, that they had to go to. They were at, or at least Mr. Fedderman was at the hearing, but had to leave before, before the public hearing sort of opened.
So it's not that they didn't get the op, that they were denied the opportunity?
They were not denied. They had another commitment that they needed to leave.
Okay, I wanted to get that straight off, right off the record. They, as far as the geotechnical report, there is a California Building Code that's going to require that, right?
That's correct.
So there won't be a question of, you know, is it a safe or, you know, can it, is it a buildable site? It's, the geotechnical report has to be done. It's, the geotechnical report has to be done.
Correct, at the plan check phase.
Okay. Now, my, my next question is about the privacy issue and the 12-by-20 balcony. Can you show me on the, on your chart where that balcony is in the, is it the rear north elevation? Is that the one?
It, it might be the easiest if I just point it out, yes, on the...
Or is it the west? What, no, on, on your, is it the west elevation?
Oh, sure, I can...
And the other thing is I didn't recognize the windows that Mrs. Federson was showing us. We're gonna be on her side viewing, if you can show me those as well.
Sure, I'll pull up the elevations.
Is, is it the west elevation? No, I want him to show me the...
Okay, this is the west elevation, and this is the elevation that faces Karen Lynn.
Okay.
The balcony...
We need to get that on, your voice on microphone, unless you're just pointing.
I'll just point.
All right.
That's the balcony?
Correct.
And what, how can I see that better? There must be a better
I will...
point of view, perspective? 'Cause I thought it was, I thought it was the rear north elevation where the, there's a... That one, I thought it was that one.
Correct. This shows the full width of the balcony.
That's what I'm saying, is that's the balcony.
Correct.
Okay, is that facing their pool?
It is...
I mean, if I went out on that balcony, would I be looking right down at their pool?
No.
Well, then what's the privacy?
You would be looking...
What's, what's the privacy issue there with the balcony? None, none?
Well, staff did not believe, and DRB did not believe that there was a privacy issue.
How, how would you be able to see their pool area from that balcony?
Uh, you would need to go to the side, the, the right side of the balcony, the narrow part, and sort of look over and back.
Okay. So it would have to be intentional. You'd have to be like, I wanna go and look in their backyard and... That's, okay. You don't have to answer, that was hypothetical. The other question?
Can I, can I just add something?
Go ahead, please, please, go ahead while I...
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, so Councilmember Esatran asked the, the property owner a question, and I think that got us into asking questions, but we hadn't concluded the hearing yet, and I would suggest that you allow the app, appellant opportunity to address any comments that remain in public comment. Then you can follow up with questions that councilmember, councilmembers have, and then close the public hearing. So we just got off tangent a little bit because...
Oh, okay, okay, fair enough. So, so we'll finish the hearing portion, then we'll close, and then we can deliberate and ask questions to staff.
Correct.
And I would like to hear from Mr. Fetterman about the DRB, why they weren't able to, or what had happened.
Okay, okay. Then, in that case, we will ask if the appellant would like to come forward again and provide any, any rebuttal to anything you've heard, and, and it sounds like we have a question. Maybe you wanna ask your question?
Let me ask you this before you present your rebuttal. In terms of your, what transpired with the design review board hearing, can you explain what prevented you from being able to state your case that evening?
Oh, certainly. I was presented with the Hobbsian choice of either being heard or making a plane to my nephew's wedding in Detroit. And it would not forfeit not only the tickets, but the opportunity to attend that wedding, attended by my other family members from different states. And I had informed, in my letter, you'll see at the outset, I point out this, and it was particularly frustrating for me because every day as a judge, I accommodate witnesses and interested parties who have constraints due to work and other things, health appointments, and I, I take them even out of order. And the design review board may not have been required to accommodate me, but it was very frustrating to sit there for two whole hours while they listened to other things. And they called me last. I'm not sure why. I filled out the comment card and I was called last, and by that time I had left. And it somehow happened to be between when I had to go to my car and when I called in, they said, "Well, we're closing the comments, so sorry, you can't be heard." So I, I, I failed to see how that's not a denial of being heard. I did everything I could. I mean, I suppose I could have forfeited attendance at my nephew's wedding and the plane tickets and the trip, but I, I don't see why I'd be required to do that and why the design review board was incapable of accommodating me.
Knowing that the, one of the neighbors had concern, is, was there any effort to accommodate? Or had you raised this issue before? Was this the first time you were coming to DRB to raise your concerns? Was that what the intent was?
Well, it was the first time I was talking to the design review board. The neighbors did meet with us, and they're very nice, and I have nothing against them. I'm sure they're not doing this to annoy us. The house is beautiful, the windows provide light, I don't question their motives. But I think their interests should be balanced with our interests because that balcony is aimed at the pool, the windows are as well. You can see the story poles, and I, I think that Mr. Kiesel perhaps hasn't been to the property itself. If you go there, you could see the story poles for yourself, and you can easily extrapolate what's visible and, and not.
Okay, no...
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. All right, those are my questions.
Okay, and, and we'll accommodate time for you to say anything else you'd like.
Thank you, thank you. In rebuttal, I, I want to say, of course, thank you for hearing me. I wanna correct a few things I heard. First, that the, the windows and balcony would be visible. The balcony, you can't really appreciate from the view head-on, is, is actually jutting out of the, the house. It's not flush with the edge of the project. And furthermore, the concern we have i- is based on the idea that from our backyard, it's inescapable to see this, and to think that the existing foliage is gonna cover it is naive. It's not. You just have to go to the neighborhood and see the story poles. I'm reassured by the testimony we heard about standards with respect to the integrity of our hillside. It's just that I had, thought they had not been addressed by the old soil sample. And I'm aware that a two-car garage had been permitted, but that's, this is a three-car garage. And I believe it was permitted based on the concept that it would be only two-car garage and it would be at least eight feet from the edge of the property. And I don't, I don't know if they're going to comply with that, I would hope so. That's very reassuring, and that's one of my real concerns, and it sounds like it's being addressed. But I still would like someone to inspect the actual hillside and the topography, and not merely the soil samples at the surface. So my concerns are still there and are not really fully addressed. And I, I do want some balancing of the interests here. I, I feel like we don't have much say in it, and yet I feel the impact on our lives makes it not just something that affects our privacy, but it's, it's borders on a public nuisance based on how prevalent it would be, certainly in our backyard, but it would also be visible to the whole neighborhood. And I think if you, again, if you went to the neighborhood and you saw the story poles, you would appreciate that easily.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that...
That's fine, and if councilmembers have follow-up questions of staff, or...
We can close the hearing now. Okay, so I'll close the hearing at 8:47 PM.
Okay. Angela, continue, or you wanna?
Well, I, I did, Councilmember Devine was asking about the, the balcony and visibility onto the, onto the neighbor's pool area and backyard. And I was just gonna follow up with, you know, is there, you know, we're, we're hearing different things now. So I'm, I'm hearing, on the one hand, there is gonna be this private, this invasion of privacy, which is a concern for us, right? We, we, that's something that's important when we look at these kinds of situations. But I'm, I'm struggling to get, you know, to get to a clear answer on that. In addition to the balcony, I was wondering if there's an issue with windows that may be looking into some of these areas.
That was, that was my question. The windows that she showed in that, where, where are they? Can you show that to us?
Sure, yeah.
I mean, if the balcony is overlooking their pool, then what are those windows that she's showing us that are overlooking their pool? I mean, it can't be both, right?
The, the west elevation, the four windows in alignment, I believe those are the windows she, she showed. This is the master bedroom. And I, I believe, I didn't see the picture real closely, but I believe those were the windows that she was concerned about.
She showed two big windows, right?
Sure.
Those are, yeah, those will technically be the evidence.
Right.
Yeah, I think if, if these were the windows here, those are the master bedroom windows that are shown on the west elevation, sort of the second floor in the middle. And just for clarification purposes, the design review board does have some jurisdiction on privacy. It is limited, though. And we, we evaluate privacy, the board evaluates privacy with regard to windows in, in more public, in more gathering, in more living spaces. So for instance, a living room, a dining room, a family room, spaces where people are congregating and, and spending most of their time. We don't evaluate privacy from rooms such as bedrooms.
Yeah, 'cause...
The other, the other place that we judge privacy is balconies larger than 25 square feet, which is why we concentrated on the loft and the balcony versus the windows in the master bedroom.
Okay, I, I get that.
And, and is it, I mean, can you help resolve this question of whether the balcony, based on what the story poles are showing, it's, is it, or is it not going to be looking into their pool area and backyard? Excuse me, the, the hearing is closed.
Staff initially did not believe that the balcony was gonna cause a privacy issue. We still don't, and the board did not.
And the board did not.
Probably, let me, let me step back to the, sort of the area site plan, and I'm gonna point where the balcony is. So this is the app, well...
Give a microphone, Laura, give a microphone.
Hopefully, we'd have a wireless...
The, the area that he's pointing at is in the southwest, kind of quarter behind the main body of the house, where he's kind of highlighting with his finger right now. If, if I can just add to this, when we're talking about the visibility and that, that perspective of privacy, the orientation of that balcony, essentially the wide portion of it, oh, am I, no, I'm on. The wide portion of it is not oriented at the pool, it's the very narrow portion. So I think what Roger and Mr. Kiesel was trying to explain is that if you were really trying to look into someone's backyard, you would have to intentionally come to the southern portion of the narrow part of the balcony, which is not how it's intended and designed to be used, and then look back at their property. The main orientation, the main method in which that balcony would be used is actually oriented away from that, that pool.
Let me just say, I, I think we're misunderstanding. I, I believe that what the appellant was saying, it's these four windows, her picture that she showed the clerk are those four windows that are looking forward. And she called it a balcony. I don't think it's necessarily a balcony, but it's the western elevation, and there's that section of the house that juts out. Where's that picture, Mr. Clerk?
I have it.
Oh.
Right, I mean, I think that's what she's talking about.
Right, so she's talking about these, these four windows, right. That's, I think she misspoke when she said balcony.
Oh, okay.
Maybe, no, but I think that would be the most intrusive element to their backyard. And I do, my question was, is that, does that come out from the side of the building? The answer is, it looks like it does, at least three feet. Mr. Kiesel, am I correct in seeing that, that this window set is out about three feet from the face of the western?
Let, let me check.
Elevation.
It does protrude, what I would say, and I will go back to Mr. Kiesel's original comment, is that we do not regulate the privacy from a non-public space, so...
But I think, just in terms of what we're referring to, I think that's the reference.
Can I, I mean...
Okay, are you...
I'm done.
Okay, Councilmember Esatran?
Okay, but we keep looking at a, something that was brought forth by a neighbor. Is that, is that up to, like, to scale? It looks like it's home, I mean, you know, 'cause it's painting, painting a picture for me visually, and I'm not sure if that height or where that house is placed, based off... Yeah, I, I mean, is it, I don't, that's something like I would make at home.
Mayor, councilmembers, it, it is not a two-scale image. That's not to say it is inaccurate, but it's also, we can't say that it is accurate. It is not a two-scale technical drawing like what we have in, in our presentation here.
Okay. Councilmember Devine, you had, you had some more questions?
I had one question for the architect, if he might come up. What am I looking at here? On the, there was a mention of the, my notes. Mention of this flat roof over the kitchen. And I'm wondering if, if, and it, it looks kind of out of place, and it also looks like it could be a platform for, in the future, another use besides just being a flat roof. And I'm wondering if you can go back and, like, re-study that and make it a pitched roof so it's more conformity, conformed to the, the house?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Ms...
The design.
Yes, of course. Thank you, Mr. for your comment. I, so that portion right there, I'm gonna open up, do you guys have the drawings?
Yes, the east elevation.
Yes, okay. I'm gonna open up the floor plan, the second floor plan. I think that's gonna answer your question. So if you look at the second floor plan, which is on sheet A-112, the flat portion is outside of the window. There's really no way you could really access that. It's, it's not, it's not in front of that bedroom. It's like to the corner of that bedroom. So, so there's really no access there. And I remember during the, the board meeting, we kind of went back and forth on this. Somebody, I forgot which board member, recommended, "Let's do a slope," and then another board member liked the flat roof, so we ended up, I think, keeping it, Roger.
I, I think, I think what happened was staff was offended by the flat roof, and the board said, "We don't care, we were fine with it."
But in terms of access, there's really no access. If you look at that large window, 2Q, it's, it's offset from where the flat portion is. If you were to step out of that, you would fall onto the slope portion.
Which, which drawing are you looking at? I'm sorry, one?
It's basically that window up here.
Which, tell me the page.
It's the second.
The second floor plan, A112.
A112.
Yeah, you'll see that there's a window, and, and from that window, you have a portion of the, of the roof is sloped and a portion is flat. And it's not a door, it's a window, so you wouldn't be able to access that.
But could the window be made into a door at one point?
It's just not even flat, though, in front of it.
Yeah.
It could, but it's not flat in front of it, if you look at it. You'd have to put a door right at the corner, and I don't think they're gonna do that. It'll be ugly and, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's not, it's not the homeowner's intention, for sure.
Yeah.
I would've known about it.
Okay, I, I'd just like for you to re-study that, 'cause I just think aesthetically. And I'm not an architect, so I'm not saying you must do that. I'm just saying maybe look at that again.
Sure, I appreciate it. Okay, sounds good.
Those are all of my questions.
Okay, okay.
That's not a precondition, though, correct?
No.
Okay, let's, thank you very much. So, the hearing is closed. I guess at this point, we really should just be doing...
Unless you have questions, I mean, obviously.
Yeah, yeah. No, I don't have any further questions. Do you, Councilmember Esatran?
I have some questions for the architect. If, I can, I'm sorry, I made it all the way back to your seat and called you back up. So I understand about soil engineer and the bedrock, and I think, you know, I, I appreciate that the pad won't increase, because I think that if it does, that would probably cause more issues than just building on the same pad where there's an existing house. But there does, in photos that I've already seen, and I went on Google Earth and I was looking around, it does look like there's a pretty steep slope between where your client's home is and where the neighboring property is of the appellant. Is your client prepared to ensure that there's no soil erosion or into the neighboring properties? This is something that, you know, if, if it's crumbling, like, it's not, it's gonna be, it's gonna make, you know, neighbors who are already uneasy with one another even more uneasy once construction begins and there's earth being moved.
So I'm not a geotechnical engineer, but these engineers, when they design the build, when, when they analyze the building, they analyze how the footprint goes into the bedrock. So in terms of the building being stable and safe, they're gonna secure that. Now, as far as topical soil crumbling down, that could happen today. That could happen a week from now, that could happen five years from now. from now, that could happen five years from now. That doesn't have to do with our building. So can something slide, like a mudslide? Sure, but that doesn't have to do with the building. The building, it's safe, will be secured into bedrock. So I hope that answered your question.
Okay.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't say that, you know, topically, you know, I could, you know, you could have a mudslide and...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And let me ask Mr. Kiesel or Mr. Calvert. So what happens if a soil engineer in this next phase, if this is to be approved, determines that it's not stable or there may be some other issues that were unforeseen? What happens to the project, then?
The project would either need to be redesigned or would not be able to move forward if that were the case. But no project would be able to move forward without ensuring the safety of any hillside.
Okay. Thank you. And the homeowner, can I ask him a question? Not you, Mr. Federman? Yeah, the applicant. So I think that hopefully you and your neighbors can come to some sort of agreement. But in terms of the home and the bedroom windows that seem to be at the crux of some of this controversy, you have those, I'm sure, because you want light to come into the home, you want to be able to look at a wonderful view. I'm very familiar with San Augustine, and we used to go over that hill into La Cañada where Sacred Heart is, and it's a great vantage point to look at, watch fireworks back when we were younger. I know the area. If your neighbor was to start planting trees that blocked those windows from that view, what would you say?
I mean, currently, the foliage continues to grow. When we moved in there 10 years ago, there were hardly any trees. Now there's, it's almost past the ground. So things are just growing there continuously, and, you know, it's, it's...
But in terms of the privacy issue, you do understand that if your neighbors decide to plant something on their property...
Right.
...that blocks that view, that is within their right to plant those?
I understand that. I mean, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
It's, it's just that it is a bedroom window. As far as privacy, right now, we could still see exactly what was already described. We could see the pool, we could see the, their windows. I mean, there's no intent to look into anybody, especially if you're on the second floor, you're seeing straight. You have to really make an active effort to look into somebody below you, especially with all the foliage.
And I get that, and I understand how staff approached this as well, because I can tell you, my own master bedroom, I probably, awake, I probably spend maybe an hour in there every day. Asleep, I spend more time, but I'm not looking out the window of my master bedroom often. Other people may, but I certainly am not. So I understand that. But I want you to understand also that your neighbors, when they have concerns, if something happens, they decide to plant tall cypresses or whatever, your view, if you were doing that with the intent of a view, and you know that we don't have, Mr. Calvert, any view protection ordinances in the city of Glendale, do we?
That is correct, Councilmember Kasakian.
All right. Just want you both to be clear on this.
We have views on the other side, too, so if that's...
I don't want a crow's nest or something, or a parapet being placed on the house just because you're expecting to see a certain view, because you are at the top of the hill. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I appreciate, thank you for both the appellant and the applicant for being here tonight, speaking. I visited the site. I read the report. There are three, three issues here. The geotechnical study by the California code is going to take care of the, the safety issue that you're concerned about. The privacy issue, we really can't look at a bedroom and say that this is a privacy issue. And the mass and scale, I agree with the DRB, that behind all of those trees and the foliage and everything else that's going on, I mean, I could hardly see the house that was there. And then the house across the street, which looked like it had just been remodeled, looked as tall as what your house is going to be, because it's elevated on a, you know, a mound. So I don't see any problem with the mass and scale and the height. So I'm going to vote to sustain the DRB decision.
Thank you. Councilmember Lujarian?
Well, you know, I know this neighborhood very well. I used to live across the street, basically, on Wendover Road. That house that overlooks the Rose Bowl that perhaps Mr. Kasakian's referring to, it was quite a, quite a great view for the fireworks. You know, the problem is that we don't have a view protection ordinance. I think the house, as situated on the current pad, with the understanding that any sort of soil and geological tests would be approved by our city engineer and the soil experts, really doesn't give me, I just don't have, I don't have anywhere to go other than to approve the, the design and sustain the decision of the DRB.
Okay. Councilmember Sotkin?
I think my colleagues covered most of what I was going to say. I do, this made me actually think about our process, Mr. Galanian. You know, looking at the fact that the Design Review Board looked at this in December, and the, you know, because it was appealed, I know that Mr. Calvert is going to be bringing back those codes and some ways that we can make things efficient. But truth of the matter is, the homeowners shouldn't have to wait after the Design Review Board seven months. I think, I don't think any of my colleagues and I would, would mind being here an additional hour or so, but having somebody wait an additional seven months, maybe we can look at the process of how many months you, you would need to bring these back sooner to us if it's going to be appealed, because time is money, and, you know, they should know one way or another where their project's headed. So my only comment would be, I would sustain the Design Review Board's decision. The re-study of the bathroom, looks like it's not being forced, it's just to take a look at, correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The re-study of the bathroom windows, that was one of the conditions.
Correct.
Does that mean that they would have to change it, or does that mean that they can just go take a look at it and see if they can do better?
Well, as it's written now, that means they're, they're required to look at that, to provide that area of the facade better proportion.
I mean, honestly, I think I would, you know, I tried envisioning what they were trying to do from the inside with the view that they would have. I don't know where my colleagues would be, but I would be okay with them just taking a look and see if they want to change it, to be able to. If not, then, you know, it would be...
That would be a consideration, then.
Okay.
So that would give them the option.
That's just one of my comments to my colleagues, I guess.
Okay. Councilmember Kasakian, you already...
Yeah, I think I've made most of my comments. I would like to apologize to the Federman family for any inconvenience that they were put through during the DRB hearing. I would hope that in the future, staff will take into consideration, and we oftentimes will do it as well, in keeping residents who come here towards the end of the meeting. And it's always been my preference to have individuals who take the time to come to City Hall to be heard earlier, because I think that, regardless of the outcome today, I think that kind of colors the whole perception of our processes and the minds of a family, especially someone who is an officer of the court. And, yeah, I'm sorry for that. But having said that, I will say that it seems as though this house meets our standards and our guidelines. Staff has worked with the applicant. Hopefully, perhaps by just talking amongst yourselves, you can figure out some sort of agreement on what the window situation may or may not be. But other than that, it's not increasing the footprint of the existing house, and it's a growing family. So I hope that you guys get to build it and spend many years in your home here. As far as, I know one, one of the speakers mentioned the size of the house being compatible with the Glendale. I went on, again, Google Earth. We can see everything from a street view and from an aerial view. The size, the increase of the house, again, the footprint isn't increasing, it's going up, really. And in terms of the neighboring homes in La Cañada and everything, size-wise, it seems it's still compatible with the area. Maybe not with the border that exists, this invisible border on the Glendale side and the homes below it, but certainly it fits into the character of that border area. So that's all. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And I will also vote to uphold the decision of the Design Review Board. I watched the Design Review Board hearing. I thought it was thorough. I thought they did address, clearly they had read and they addressed the comments in the letter that Mr. Federson had sent. I agree that, I'm disappointed that we couldn't have moved the order of items around to accommodate you, Mr. Federman. I think that would have been appropriate. I don't know why we didn't. And again, yeah, as Councilmember Kasakian said, I'm sorry for that. I know they're not obligated to do it, but I guess they, they could have. Nonetheless, I think that, that the Design Review Board, even though you weren't there to present, did respond to that letter. And, and I think their discussion was very thorough. They, they considered the privacy question. They, they explained that this geotechnical issues are going to be handled through a separate process. They did discuss compatibility with the hillside, hillside design guidelines and felt it was compatible. And they did look at this issue of whether it is an outlier. And, and I checked also that our, our process and our policy, our approach, has always been to look at the area, irregardless of where an artificial city boundary is. We're looking at the whole area. And on that basis, it seems to blend in. It doesn't seem excessively large. So I would, I want to support the DRB's decision. I would personally say that we would just, you know, uphold all the conditions at the DRB place. I thought they're the experts. It was a very, very thorough discussion. I'm comfortable with the points they made. And, and I personally would, would ask that we sustain their decision with all the conditions that they put forward.
I'll move that. I agree. I'll move, make a motion to sustain the DRB.
Sustain the DRB with all of their conditions. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and let's have roll call, then.
Councilmember Sedgarian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Rotman?
Yes. Thank you very much. And what is next?
Next is 10 Reports and Information, 10A Public Outreach and Education on Organics and Recycling Program.
Mayor, members of city council?
Oh, yes, sorry.
No worries.
I'm losing track.
That's fine.
Is there a bridge version?
Yeah.
We will, we will go, we have 41 slides, 41 or so, so we'll try to go through them as fast as possible. As a reminder, this is an information-only item. We will not seek or take direction from council. You may ask questions, again, but there'll be no, no decisions made. With that, I'll turn it to Mr. Amrani, who wants to introduce our consultant, who's worked on this item, and we'll try to go through it as quickly as possible.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. This is a fun presentation. We're, we want to, we wanted to really give the council a status update in terms of our public outreach and education with respect to our, our solid waste, and since, especially since the implementation of SB 1383. We have two of our consultants here tonight that are going to be doing this presentation, and it'll go really fast. It's mostly a lot of pictures. The first one is, our first consultant is Mr. Stephen Groner of SGA Consultants, who's our public outreach consultant, and he will go through the, the efforts that we've done really since, over the last year and a half, with the implementation of, as I mentioned, SB 1383, with regards to recycling and organics. And we will also, we also have Ms. Natalie Lesa of Recreate, who's going to cover the, the food diversion program, which has been very successful. And we want to make sure that, again, we provide a status update to the council. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Groner.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor and council members. So we're going to talk about the status of kind of what we've been doing. This is our team, so we have, we have a larger team, but this is the people that are specifically working on the program in implementing the overall program. A little bit of the approach that we take. So the way we do our education is what we call community-based social marketing. And the idea is that we're not just trying to raise awareness, but in this case, we're actually trying to change people's behavior. This is a new topic. We're trying to get people to engage in. Recycling, obviously, has been for a while, but now trying to get organics onboard as well. So with that, with this new behavior we're trying to get people to do, is number one, we're trying to reduce, if you will, the barriers for people to do that. Second, we want to motivate them. You know, why is it? The mayor had talked about earlier about heat and extreme heat and, and temperature. Well, organics is actually one of the biggest contributors to climate change from the methane that's produced from it. And so giving people a motivation, a reason why this is so important. And then third, how does it become part of their life? What's the narrative that we want them to develop? Have them see their neighbors do it as well, and getting people to change. Then the other thing we're looking at is, we want to understand that we're trying to educate people. We're going to need to kind of reach, Glendale's a large city, a breadth, reaching a lot of people, but also depth, because they need to know how to do. So we want to have a balance between a deep approach and kind of a, a wide approach in, in reaching that. And then our goal is overall is to obviously reduce waste, get people to recycle the right way, use the three bin program the right way, and then obviously comply with local and state laws. This is not just something for Glendale, but it's something across the state that's being implemented. Just to kind of run through this, we have about six focus areas that we built into. So it was a multi-pronged approach that we developed. Here's a kind of, some pictures. This is actually some educational videos that we created to give people that in-depth understanding. We have almost 200,000 views, so 200,000 views of these videos to date. The videos are in three languages, Armenian, English, and Spanish, because we need to reach people, obviously, in how they want to be reached. We've also distributed flyers through the haulers, working with the haulers, through social media, another way that, obviously, a lot of people are getting their information, newsletters, and then also direct mail. Some people, they, they like the old paper. So how do we get it to them in the way that they want to be, be reached? But it also is, is the how-to, the signage that would be put up so people can kind of see and visually easily recognize what they need to do, giving notices specifically targeting multifamily. Multifamily's difficult, because we have to both reach the landlords, the property owners, maybe the property managers, and then also the residents. And so specifically reaching out to them. We had a mailer to the multifamily residents in November 2022. In 2021, there's a notice that was sent out to all the property owners. And this has been done in three languages, as we talked about, and we'll continue to plan for additional notices to them in, later in 2023 in the fall. So we want to, again, it's, it's not a one-time thing. It's a multi-year process to continue to get people onboard, remind them, and move them from awareness to, to actually behavior change. Here's a copy of the tenant letters that went out, and then also sending out guides to kind of give them information, and not only to the residents, but also to businesses. So a guide to let them know, because we need to be able to engage both the residents and businesses in this, in this effort. We also did, again, talking about the deeper part, did webinars. We, we did a webinar. It was about an hour-long webinar. We did it live. But then we also put these webinars on websites for us and the haulers, and we continue to get views of the webinar, now that it's even after it's posted, and continue to, to push this out. And then as far as kind of the large-scale awareness campaign, we obviously sent out annual notices to folks, so it reached everyone in the city. But then also kind of let people, kind of reminders, kind of, if you will, where they weren't doing it right. We put out tags to let them know that they need to make some changes on how they were doing things. And then also posted this on our website and all the, the haulers as well. And then also paid advertising. So again, getting this out to where they get their information, we use Google Ads. Almost, go back a second, we, almost 3.7 million in... Almost, go back a second, we, almost 3.7 million impressions. And then also looking at how they engage. And we actually optimize this to kind of, we put multiple different ads out to see what they would react to. And then we can kind of see there was about 36,000 clicks, so people responding and getting more information. And then what we saw was most effective, we continued to push out those type of ads. We were on Nextdoor, about 600, I'm sorry, 100,000 impressions, 640 clicks. As far as engagement, YouTube ads, these were both in English and Spanish, almost 500,000 impressions, almost 200,000 complete views, so that even going through the entire thing and watching the entire ad. And then also on Meta, Facebook, and Instagram, English, Spanish, and Armenian, almost a million impressions, 31,000 engagements, where people clicked and kind of went down to the website. And then overall, you can see about 5 million impressions. So it's about hitting people not just once, but multiple times, and hitting them in multiple places where they're most likely to get that information, to get them, again, from awareness to engagement to changing their behavior. Then the last thing is, we also use other people's social media, the haulers, to get information out to kind of, again, so that they're hearing it not just from the city, but hearing it from others as well, and leverage this to have almost, you know, 240,000 impressions, getting people to click and getting information out to them, and then integrating online and offline. So also getting the haulers out to community events so that they can actually talk to people, answer their questions. So here's 10 community events that they went to. They were recently at the cruise night. They'll be out at National Day Out, and they'll be talking to them, answering people's questions, engaging them as well. So we have that, if you will, that broad and shallow, and again, that narrow and deep, and really talking to individuals to get them onboard and understanding some of the barriers that they may perceive, but then also some of the solutions to get them to engage in this new thing that we're asking them to do with organic recycling. Also, though, giving it back to the community. So with the compost, we've given away 58 tons already, giving it back to the community. So it's composting, so they're seeing it, seeing the positive part of what we're doing as a city in doing this effort, and having events where they can come and take it back and see the benefit and use it within their home, et cetera, their yard. And then the one-on-one engagement. So both for multifamily and businesses, we started with businesses. It's hard. We're asking businesses to do something, something hard. This is a state mandate, so we're working with them as well, going to them, doing site visits, answering their questions, giving them materials, talking to them about how they can train their employees. You can kind of see, we have about 27% of all the commercial accounts, and they're reaching out to us, and we're going into them and helping them, train them, again, answer their questions, help them along as the program is new, relatively new, started in 2022. And there's going to be a couple-year phase in, but getting this onboard and making sure that we're answering their questions, we're there for them to help them with this change. And then the last, but not least, is school outreach. Again, we're talking about the next generation, and how do we use them to kind of also bring that message home and get them involved. And the city's been going into schools, the Eco Hero Show. We're going into them, getting them excited about this, getting them interested, how can they be a part of it, and hopefully bringing that message home to their parents, and, you know, perhaps nagging them a little bit to get them onboard as well. That's, again, talking about the motivation, the reason for doing it, that we're doing it for the next generation, because this is something that we kind of created, and hopefully we can do something to help them out. And as I mentioned, organics, recycling is one of the parts of climate change that is something that we all can individually take action to make a difference on. So we've been going out to the schools and talking with the kids and making sure that they're involved as well. So last, I'll end it here, just kind of looking ahead. We're also, they're going to be coming out with a recycling app, so Recycling Coach app that'll be coming out to give them information on kind of searchable database, and then also, obviously, they can use it with their phone, so they can have that information, kind of help them along the way. And then we've got about 10 different things we're going to be doing next year, looking forward. And one of the important things is evaluating what we're doing, kind of item number three, in the fall. You know, one of the most important things is actually going out to the residents and doing a survey and engaging, you know, how well we're moving the needle on the awareness, seeing where we're at as far as behavior change, and continuing to work with them, and obviously then continuing to work with them at both that wide level of trying to build the awareness, but then also that deep level of really answering questions and getting people along the way.
Yes, please.
Can I ask a couple of questions? How many times or mailings have you done for the guides for residents, like the sheets that say, you know, these are where this goes in this bin, that bin? How many mailings have you done? Because I haven't gotten one in a long time, and I would sure like to have another reminder.
So as far as the mailer that went out to everyone, the most recent mailer was done last year, I'm sorry, beginning of 2023.
Yeah.
And then there was one in 2022 to the property owners. And then with that, we gave them a toolkit. So one of the things that we'll continue to do is to continue to put out information and then also give information to them as far as the guides, because certainly that's going to be helpful. But then with that also is working with the haulers, and working with the haulers. We meet with them to coordinate outreach as well, to make sure that we get information out. So knowing that, you know, to continue to push out information.
Right, but I mean for resident homeowners, single-family homes. I think it's time to send another mailer, I'm just saying. I would appreciate getting one. I know that mine is getting, my copy is a little frazzled. Distribution of the green bins, how's that going? Is that Mr. Amrani that should answer that? I mean, do all the families have, all the residents have the green bins?
Councilmember Devine, all the homeowners have the green, are you talking about the lunch pail?
Yes, yes, exactly.
Those have been distributed to, what we're doing is we're distributing it to them as we're replacing their bins. So we've replaced Phase 1 of our bins, and I'm going to ask Mr. Hartgrove to come up and give a progress on the lunch pail distribution.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Dan Hartgrove, Assistant Director of Public Works. Yeah, the lunch pails are, the primary way we're moving lunch pails out is with the cart replacement program. We finished our Phase 1 in La Cressena, so every resident, single-family resident in La Cressena, when they receive their new carts, they receive the kitchen pails as well. We're going to be doing Phase 2 this fiscal year, which is our Tuesday and Wednesday routes. We're going by the routes, which is Riverside Ranch, up to, I'm just kind of giving you a general geographic area, up to Bram Park, that kind of zone. And again, with every single organics cart, there will be a pail accompanying it. We give them out at events. Usually come in with a stack for when we're at National Night Out or Cruise Night. We'll have some available there. And we've had, I don't have an exact number, but we've had a number of visitors who have come to the office and have picked them up directly as well.
So you will have them out for neighborhood, I know last year I took them.
Yes, yes.
Actually, I took them to National Night Out, to all of the places where I visited, and the people, the residents, were so happy to receive those. So hopefully, you know, all of us will be armed with pails this year when we go to National Night Out. That'd be great.
Yeah, and we encourage residents to come by on Fridays is optimal. We're trying to promote Friday like a single day where we can really focus on getting them out. So we're working on getting outreach out on the Friday pickup day at the yard.
Follow-up before you leave. How about the multifamily?
Multifamily for.
For the pails?
For the pails, that's, those are available, you know, again, we're trying to advertise on those. We do ask, we've had a number of people come down with like a resident petition-type things that are signed by the residents, and we've provided pails, kind of in bulk. But those are, all you have to do is come down, multifamily resident can come down to the integrated waste yard, and, you know, we need identification, because we want to make sure we're giving it to Glendale residents. But other than that, they're open.
Why aren't the haulers distrib, I mean, people are not going to go down to pick them up. You're going to get a very low takeout if that's the, if that's the distribution method. Why wouldn't the haulers be, why wouldn't we be asking them to proactively distribute these?
We could certainly do that. Mayor Brotman notes that that's not an avenue that we've gone yet in terms of the haulers picking the city.
I know we're not giving direction, but I'll just say, it would be a nice thing if we could do that. I think it would be a wise.
Or, I was going to say, maybe even notify landlords to come down and pick up, like if they have six units, come on down, pick up six pails and take them to your renters. I think that might work as well.
So outreach on their availability.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Those are, yeah.
And my next question is about the contamination tags. Who gets those, those to the multifamily units? Contamination tags that you showed on.
Yeah, those are, those have been going out, we've been doing those with route reviews, and there's the, there's no enforcement yet, it's just education.
Well, now, see, now that's a problem, because I talked to a resident who has been asked to pay a fee, twice.
Oh, there may have been a repeat type of a situation.
Like we want to throw one plastic bag in the wrong container.
They've been asked to pay a fee?
Yes.
Okay, okay, we can.
So the contamination tags are going to the multifamily homes, not to single-family homes?
They're going to both. Councilmember Devine, however, the enforcement hasn't started, so it's at this point, it's warning. And I think the cases that you had mentioned to me, we're following up with the haulers.
Right, right.
To find out what exactly happened.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you for answering this.
Councilmember Asatrian?
I think my, you know, I raised this during the staff meeting for multifamily. I've talked about this before, but my building is a perfect example. There are 50-plus units in the building. I don't think most of my neighbors know that we have new containers downstairs. I believe Mr. Hartgrove, actually, you were the one that sent the email specifying the outreach, for example, that was done on our property, right? And so there was one letter, which I do remember receiving in November of 2022, right? But then when I look at all the other stuff from Southland, which was supposed to be direct outreach, it is either done to the property management, which has never communicated any of this to us, or it's a bill insert, which means that if I'm viewing my bills online, I'm not getting any of this, right? And so I think especially with the larger buildings, each of these buildings have trash chutes that lead to that larger container. The, I'm just going to go off of my building. I can't imagine most of my neighbors walking from the third floor down to where the trash chutes or the trash cans currently are, and in the way that they're positioned for them to actually take their disposables and put them there. And so I don't know if there's a creative way for us to like think about how we also work with each of these multifamily buildings to see if there's a better way to go about not just educating, but also how we're pushing these out. The, I think the first time that I had seen those green bins that are supposed to be on the counter, the first thought that went through my mind is, I don't have that much kitchen counter space when I live in an apartment in order to put that on my counter. And so I think one of the feedbacks I gave was, I don't know how many of these we've purchased, but it's for us to also look at something that's more versatile, where somebody can possibly use it on their, you know, the door underneath the sink, or have it be something that's a little more flexible, because that's a really bulky thing for anybody that has a small kitchen to place on their kitchen counter card. So it is sitting in my trunk. I tell people that it exists, but I, for one, would not be able to use that. So I think it would be helpful for us to kind of think through the difficulties and the different scenarios for those that are renting and multifamily units as we're doing these outreach. But again, I, for one, and none of my neighbors, it seems like, aside from that one mailer that we got in November 2022, teaching us about the difference in recyclings, have not received any notice about new trash cans or anything else, unless they, you know, they get their bill inserts, and I don't know what's in the bill insert.
Councilmember Asatrian, and that is one of the problems that we do recognize with multifamily housing, because we, and that's not, that's the jurisdiction of our haulers that they have to deal with. The, usually it's the landlord that signs the contract, and they have to deal with them. But we do recognize that. And one of the things that we've done, and we've talked to them, and they've also offered, is they have these consultants, you know, onboard, and, for example, the location that you mentioned in terms of where the bins are. And they do work in trying to optimize the location, and if we have to move them around or that sort of a thing. But that has to come also from the landlord who owns the property. But we are going to follow up with them, and as we receive these feedback, and in this case, whether it's Southland or the other haulers, to make sure that they work with the landlords to come up with these creative solutions in terms of making it easier for people to separate their organics.
If I may add, I don't want my building to be prioritized. I actually want it to continue as is, for me to be able to know exactly what we are, what we're not getting, because that's a good test for me to see what's happening in the rest of the city. Thank you.
We do have another presentation that's going to talk about the food diversion. It's a quick five-minute presentation. And this will be by Ms. Natalie Lesa.
All right, let's just make sure this works here. Great. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to share about the important work of edible food recovery happening here in Glendale. I'm Natalie Lesa, co-founder of Recreate Waste Collaborative. We're a consulting company that provides business technical assistance to support the city's waste diversion and sustainability goals. We began working with the city in January 2022 at the onset of Senate Bill 1383. We were brought on to assist in developing an edible food recovery program and expand the services of food to the insecure individuals in the community. Our project team is shown here. We have Kendra Schussel at the top right. She's a recycling specialist with Recreate. Kendra is providing in-person business technical assistance related to food donation to the businesses impacted by this law. To support the success of food recovery, we have brought on the support of Nancy Beta at the bottom right with FoodCycle LA. FoodCycle is a regional organization that provides transportation from food donors to local Glendale food recovery organizations and redistribution to the community. Also on the team is Allison Schill with Carrot. Carrot is an app that is available with this partnership to all businesses in Glendale free of charge. The app makes it easy to have food donors post their available food for pickup, and it also tracks the food donation, which is important for the record-keeping requirements of SB 1383. Together, we're providing education to all of the businesses that are impacted by the edible food recovery requirements of SB 1383, of which I'll be sharing the results in this presentation. Through our partnership, the city of Glendale has been successful in implementing the edible food donation requirements of SB 1383. Jurisdictions are required to have an edible food program in place and make that program available to all of the impacted businesses. As you can see here, the additional requirements of the state law are to provide education and outreach to the businesses and organizations, to update the website with a list of the food recovery organizations that are located within the city. The city is required to conduct inspections annually to all of the edible food generators, or EFGs, and food recovery organizations within the city, and develop an approach for the upcoming enforcement date of January 1, 2024, as the law does require the issuance of notice of violations for non-compliance. So how have we implemented those requirements? Starting in January of last year, we began developing a comprehensive outreach program, starting with the development of a resource packet. Most businesses are not aware of their requirements under SB 1383 for food donation. So we put together a really robust packet with food donation handling requirements, employee training guides, a checklist of what the requirements. employee training guides, a checklist of what the requirements were, and those are made available to all of the businesses during our site visits. The city has also conducted multiple webinars to share information with the community about SB 1383 and those recordings are available online. The city's website now includes ample information to help businesses get set up with their program. We've completed the process of reviewing the city's business list and identified all of the Tier One and Tier Two EFGs and organizations that are covered by this law. We've also conducted a capacity assessment to really determine whether the organizations within the city have enough facility space and the infrastructure to support all of the food that could be donated from those EFGs. And the good news there is that we did find that there is currently enough capacity as estimated for what is being generated right now by those businesses. And for site visits, we, well, one are required to visit all of the Tier Ones currently and Tier Twos starting next year. But really as far as outreach and behavior change goes, we want to go to where the businesses are and work with them hand in hand to get set up to have their programs be successful. As of this Friday, we will have completed all of the visits to Tier One and Tier Two generators. And those are proving to already be successful as we're following up with businesses that have had a hard time and seeing success in those programs already. This diagram shows the types of businesses impacted by the edible food recovery requirements of SB 1383. Tier One generators are required as of January of last year. These are your wholesale food vendors, food service providers, distributors, supermarkets that make over 2 million annual revenue and grocery stores over 10,000 square feet. There are currently 32 identified Tier Ones in the city. And Tier Two is required beginning January of 2024. We've identified 47 of those businesses. These are your hotels with 200 rooms or more and a food service on site, your large restaurants that have a capacity of 250 seats or more or are 5,000 square feet or larger, your health facilities that have 100 beds or more and a food facility on site, your large venues, so these are the malls and movie theaters that see over 2,000 attendees a day, local education agencies, which are the public schools and Unified School District, and state agencies. These numbers may fluctuate from year to year as new businesses open, as businesses change their scope and otherwise how businesses just kind of change in revenue. So this is something that we're keeping an eye on so that we can make sure to meet with every business on a yearly basis. SB 1383 also requires the city to identify the organizations that, these are really your key partners in the city that are recovering that food and redistributing food donations to food insecure individuals within Glendale. Here are the seven that are listed within the city. Five of those are currently receiving directly from edible food generators and are therefore required to comply with the record-keeping details of the law. We've visited all of these organizations multiple times now and recently learned that over 2 million pounds of edible food was recovered in 2022 by these seven organizations, which is incredible. These are volunteer-run organizations and just wonderful resources within the city. That is food that's directly being diverted from the landfill and redistributed for human consumption. So looking forward, and this is my last slide here. One of the things that we heard from all of the organizations when we met with them was they really wanted an opportunity to meet each other and learn from each other through peer-to-peer sharing. In response to this feedback, the city will be hosting the first food recovery roundtable, which will be held August 25th at 10:00 a.m. at the Adult Recreation Center, where all of the city's food recovery organizations can meet, maintain ongoing relationships, express what their needs are and hopefully share some strategies for expanding on the success of their programs. We are now conducting follow-up site visits to provide a deeper level of assistance to the businesses, which is made available in both Armenian and Spanish. As mentioned, we're already seeing improvements. We've had seven businesses come onboard with Food Cycle LA since we started working together, which has been really helpful for increasing their programs. We're continuing to follow up with businesses and Carrot is continuing to onboard those businesses through the food tracking app. And we're taking all of the feedback that we're hearing from those over 80 businesses and organizations and continuing to develop the program and develop resources that really support their success. There are current links on the web page, city's webpage, and a brochure that helps residents get connected that are looking for food. And we're looking forward to expanding on the program for the rest of this year and going into next year with enforcement coming up. So that concludes my presentation and I welcome any questions. Thank you.
Natalie, first of all, congratulations on founding this, this company. Good for you.
Thank you.
Good for you. Kudos. On the Tier One and Tier Two, the 32 and the 47, those aren't, those aren't already in the program, right? Or are they? Or are they just, you're just contacting them or they're available?
They have all been contacted. They are all required by Senate Bill 1383 to have a food donation program in place. Again, Tier One was required as of January last year and Tier Two will be required January 2024. So we've made contact with all of those businesses to let them know. And yes, some of them are already getting signed up with the program.
Wonderful, wonderful. And you've already had 2 million pounds of food, did you say?
2 million pounds were reported for recovery last year. Yes.
In Glendale?
In, by food recovery organizations in Glendale.
Wow, that's amazing.
You have quite a few here.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much.
Mayor. Councilmember Satrian?
Thank you for this presentation. So in terms of, you know, one of the things that we heard in the last few years was how our food pantries were struggling. A lot of the organizations that we had that were providing assistance to those who were having difficulties finding food, nourishment, being able to, you know, they were on the verge of hunger or suffering from hunger. How does this affect that? Is there a way to measure what impact that's having on the pantries and those individuals in need?
Through the partnerships with Food Cycle LA, so what they really do is connect food to the organizations that they know are in need because they have that regional approach and that, that regional view. So they are able to kind of place food more appropriately than if that program wasn't in place. And then through Carrot, as mentioned, we're onboarding all of these food pantries and churches onto Carrot so that they can get notified whenever a food donation gets posted by a business and claim that. And if they have means for transportation to pick us, pick that up, they're able to do so. So we're tracking through Carrot when those donations are made. And hopefully through those roundtable meetings that we're looking to have that be a repeating meeting, we can continue to make those resources available.
So would you say that within a year we'll have some more clear or accurate statistics on?
Yes, that would be, yes, correct.
Okay. If I may, Councilmember Satrian, if you go back to the slide that you were showing, those seven entities, as you can see, these are the seven entities that are involved and have been able to recover the 2 million pounds. And they include like the Essentia and other organizations that are directly involved in this effort through the, the partnership with, with Recreate. Thanks.
The one thing that's crossing my mind here is, and it looks like you're working with the food service providers and then the restaurants that are going to be part of that list or the larger facilities. I know we're supposed to be, I don't know if, where we're at with hiring the community outreach person for the plastics ban that we're looking at. But I was thinking, you know, as she was going through the presentation, I was thinking that this might be a good opportunity as we're out there for this. I don't know how you incorporate the other, but for us to be able to utilize this connection in gaining both feedback and the data that we were looking for, for that plastics ban. So you're, you're doing the outreach and you're there already, so.
I will say that is an approach that we have provided for other cities as well because it makes sense. You're visiting the same businesses and you have the attention of the right person.
Right.
Thank you for your presentations, both of you. And thank you to Mr. Imran and Mr. Hartgrove, Hartgrove, for your work on this. Thank you. Okay, long night and we're on oral communications.
Yes, so I am number 13, oral communication. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Your speaker is allowed five minutes. Councilman question will respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Mayor, I do have five cards.
Five cards, okay. Thank you. Okay, so number one is Gemma and Roberta. Oh, no. Come on, come on, come on, come on.
Oh, my God.
Okay, so good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. This is my first speech, so I am a little nervous. First, happy birthday, Mayor Brodmann. Now, since we're a couple hours away from celebrating Councilmember Ari Kusakian's birthday, now I want to wish you a happy birthday. Mostly everyone knows how special Mr. Kusakian is to me and my life. Happy birthday, wishing you all the best in your life. Always be healthy and we all are thankful for all your dedicated service you did for the community and still continuing to do. Looking forward to many more years working with you. And also thank you for always being an inspiring mentor to the younger generation. Once again, happy birthday, Mr. Kusakian and Mayor Brodmann.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You did a good job.
You did awesome. Thank you.
You didn't sound nervous.
Thank you, Roberta. Thank you, Gemma. You guys are awesome. Thank you.
Did they?
Yeah.
Yeah. There was cake. I wish all our meetings ended with cake.
That's very, very kind of you. Okay, Elizabeth Luce.
Please come up to the microphone first.
Okay. I'm sure you're all familiar with this proposed development up in the north end of Glendale. The streets are Kenneth Glen Oaks, roughly Kenneth Glen Oaks, over to Pacific and Brand, which is a low-level, low-profile area with mostly one- and two-story buildings, some three-story. And they are proposing tearing down two acres, 31, 37 units, excuse me, and building a six-story, 131-unit building. And of course, this is a density bonus project and we're told that we need to sit through the design review process. So one of the things I wanted to point out was at the design meeting, I was hit with numerous things that I consider deceptive, including things like there's no native trees on the property when there are. Could you go back?
Sure.
So one of the things is, and yet this was brought up with the Augustine property. I do have training in drafting, mechanical and architectural, and I also have classical drawing, so I know vanishing points in perspective. So I just did this little thing here. The upper one is the artistic rendering, one of several inaccurate ones. The next one is the true. The red is what the architects presented. The other is what you'll really see from the street. Okay, next slide. They've made use of a technique called foreshortening. It's a common optical illusion and it's based on principles that go back to Greek and Roman times, but it does create deceptive angling of the perspective. And it is a known technique. Next slide. So what I looked at, this is the ground floor, and what you see there in red is what, for lack of a better word, I would call a facade. It's a row of apartment units and they've, I think, next slide, I forget. Well, I guess I'm a little bit out of order. If you go back, go back.
One more?
Yeah, yeah, one more. What they've done is they've put this facade row in front and altered its true proportion. So go ahead, keep going, keep going. Oops, nope, go to four. So I did a little home project. Now, I have to say that you may or may not know this, but all cell phones have distorted lenses. They're not true 35-millimeter camera lenses. They are slightly fisheye, which is another technique going on in the drafting. So I was using my cellphone, but I did my very best to be accurate. If, you know, the house had two, two levels of windows, I matched them up and I made sure it was two levels of windows. So this is our little neighborhood. These are some of the tallest buildings in our neighborhood that you're seeing. And this is how this will look. Okay. And below, the upper one is based off the drafting. The second one is just something I did for fun because what you see there in the middle is the east elevation, which is the true height of this building. So I did something fictional where I flipped the rear of the building and I put it in the lower picture because I think in many ways that gives you the true emotional bulk of this. Okay, next. And case in point, the same developer, B.W. Brody. This is their Sherman Metro Art Sherman Oaks. There's the drawing, there is the actual with a fairly, it's not quite the same angle because I got it off of Google Maps. I didn't go down there to try to replicate. Well, I couldn't because I would have had to have a helicopter. And as you can see, the same exact techniques, much of the same design as Metro Art Glendale. And they've used that front facade to create, make it look prettier than it is. All right, next. Okay, this is looking down. Was that my one-minute warning?
That was your five minutes are up warning.
Was that seriously five minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
I meant to set my timer.
How many more slides do you have?
Does the speaker have more?
I have 12 slides total. There are two, there are a couple I would really like to show you.
Can I ask the speaker to show the two that you would really like to show us and only those two?
Yeah.
Okay, go forward. Shoot, there's actually, all right, go one more. This is, now, this I don't claim, the drafting I claim to be accurate. This one is based on me walking around by foot. The red are single-family homes. The green are owner, and one owner-occupied apartment. And the purple are condos. And I think what you may not realize about this neighborhood is there's a great deal more single-family homes than you would realize. And in black, it's Glendale Garden Homes. So it is pretty much surrounded by.
Okay.
Okay, and then let's see, go forward, go forward.
Yeah, please let's wrap it up quickly because it's not fair to everybody else.
This is it. And those trees, and it's beautiful, there's seven juttermint trees on this property. The proposed building would be taller than those trees. Now, I know this may be an architectural developer trick. It may go down four stories, I don't know. But at the last design review meeting, there was a lot of traumatized, upset people. And you're doing a very, by, by not stopping this juggernaut now, you're harming a whole neighborhood. And I hope you watched the comments that people made because it was very heartfelt.
Thank you.
And you will be dealing with this problem in the future if there's any way to stop it now.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay. Ellen Durham.
Happy birthday, Mayor Brodmann.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kusakian. Rather than banning the city council as an earlier speaker suggested, I'd actually like to express my thanks to the council for being receptive to my suggestion at the July 11th meeting. July eleventh meeting. At that meeting, I suggested that the districting outreach forums begin with a presentation on the reasons the council has proposed to go to six districts and an elected mayor, and I subsequently attended the July twentieth outreach forum at Brand Library. Newly added to that forum was what I thought was a very effective background presentation on the reasons for the districting proposal, and also included was the fact that if the districting proposal or ballot measure fails, the council can adopt five districts by ordinance without a vote of the residents. So I appreciated that addition as well. I think that the additional information led to a much more productive and constructive discussion at the outreach forum and the districting proposal, regardless of whether the attendees were for, against, or undecided. So I do think it really has enhanced the forum meetings. I'd also like to thank city attorney Mike Garcia for attending that forum on the twentieth and doing a great job answering some of the legal questions that came up. So again, I'd like to thank the council and the city staff for listening to my suggestion and doing what I thought was a great job in adding the background information to the outreach forums. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alan Dish.
In the spirit of Mr. Vatchet Mangasarian and the hat lady, I hope you get these references, thank you for my five minutes. Dear council and honorable staff, good evening, my name is Alan Dish, local resident and musician. I want to thank you so much for installing the public piano. Councilwoman Ellen Asatrian, you were so receptive months ago to this message, and all of you, really, you've been very kind. So, I was there yesterday and today, my good friend Karen Kwak sent me a photo of it, so I went there. I'm a member also at the Adult Rec Center, so I just have two things, really. I'm not going to use the minutes, just, I would like a bench installed, if that's okay, because, you know, the seats are closed at eight p.m., I took my bench today, but I would like a piano bench installed, if that's okay, and yes, I would also like to have some kind of music nights in that area. I know, we have it at the Brand Library, but it would be nice if we have local Glendale musicians across the Americana, a wonderful shopping place, I go there a lot, so, the piano is incredible. I incredibly happy about it, and thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you. First, you want a piano, then you want a bench, what's next? Where's it going to end?
Pre-housing.
I do want to ask about the bench, we have a piano, but we don't have a bench?
Councilwoman Asatrian, it's a standing piano, you stand and play out it. We'll look.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
We play it before the morning.
Okay, our next speaker is Emmanuel Gulakian.
Good evening, happy birthday, Mayor Brotman and Councilman Kusakian.
Thank you.
So, I'm speaking tonight about districting, and so, when I attended the workshop about a week ago, I found it to be productive, and that I learned more about how the process might work and some of the motivations behind it, and I really appreciate having those explanations whenever I attended that workshop. However, after looking at some of the history behind districting, the fact that we've been through this process before, in 2015, there was Measure D, which asked, shall the city institute by-district elections for city council by amending the charter and adopting an ordinance requiring the city to prepare a district plan? And sixty-two percent of the votes said no to that, they wanted to keep our at-large election system. And some of the arguments I've come across in support of districting, they just don't really hold up to scrutiny. I've heard the argument, neighborhoods will have more of a voice with districts. I just think that it's extraordinary to be having a plan of, or even the idea that Glendale is rigidly divided into districts, the way, for example, in the city of LA, San Pedro and Venice are very different communities with different interests. I've lived in Verdigo Woodlands for most of my life, and my grandmother lives about a couple of blocks away from here, and so, you know, therefore, I've spent a lot of time in these neck of the woods here in the city center, and so, I just, me personally, I regard, you know, this part of Glendale as my home, like, not, no differently than Verdigo Woodlands. And so, I just, based on that, I don't think we should be imposing arbitrary political divisions on Glendale. And I've also heard about the argument, candidates would not be, would not need to raise as much money to run for elections. We actually have tested out a districting process when it comes to the school board, and so, there is one school board member, in 2015, she raised about forty-two thousand dollars, and in 2020, she raised a little bit more than that in her trustee area election. So, and she's been an incumbent for many years, and there was really no difference in terms of the money she raised with at-large elections and trustee area elections. Elsewhere in Pasadena, Councilwoman Jason Lyon in the seventh district raised about a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars for his election. Steve Madison in Pasadena's sixth district raised about a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. And so, that's about comparable to what happens in Glendale. And over in the city of LA, Venice's Councilwoman Tracy Park raised a staggering six-hundred thousand dollars in her election in 2022. And even with the trustee areas in the school board, there was one school board member, trustee area D, I believe, he ran unopposed, unopposed, and so, the voters in that trustee area didn't have much of a choice there, so that's another potential flaw that could happen. And so, I just think, you know, based on the fact, in 2015, Glendale voters made it, expressed themselves clearly that they wanted, you know, the status quo at-large elections, and I don't think really anyone else should be influencing that process, especially outside of the city of Glendale. Thank you for your time, have a good night.
Thank you. I understand we have two callers?
Mayor, we do, we have two callers. Tom O'Shannonsey, you have five minutes, go ahead, Tom.
I'll do it in a minute. You know what, some of you know I'm in a wheelchair, and when you're going across Brand, for example, by the, where the Red Cross used to be, the yellow lights aren't really visible in the daytime. The people want to see a yellow light, they want to chase it and get ahead of the red light, so I find myself with a car seeing me and still wanting to race to get in front of my wheelchair while I'm moving across the street. Could you consider changing to red, because red means stop. Red stands out daytime or nighttime. The yellow lights do not work to the protection of people in wheelchairs, people walking with canes, people that just don't walk fast, so, I'd like that you have you consider changing when you upgrade the lights to go from yellow to red. Thank you very much, and happy birthday to two of you. When I see you in a non-city facility, I'll buy you each a pint of something.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, thank you.
Next caller is Vaughn. Vaughn, you have five minutes, go ahead, Vaughn.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, city council members, I have everything as well with all of you. I have three topics to talk about, one is about districting. Again, districting is not a wise idea for Glendale, it's a divide and conquer idea that came from Sacramento, and I think Sacramento is forcing the city council to adopt this ordinance, or this resolution, or whatever you want to call it. We have voted already in 2015 against districting. And to be fair, since city council members today, all of our law for fairness, if we go to that route, we should have at least thirteen city council members. We have about seventy thousand people who live in nine-one-two-oh-five Zico alone, which they should have at least three representatives, one Hispanic, and two other ones, and the rest of the city should have at least one or two council members. As far as the districting goes, the amount of funds that each candidate can raise should not be more than ten thousand dollars, so everyone, especially since Mr. Brotman is very concerned about the underprivileged LGBTQ community that can afford to participate in the election in Glendale, so the maximum should to raise should be ten thousand dollars. As far as the second, my comment is about what's happening in the Gornagarabach, the blockade which is happening for the last seven months, and I think the city of Glendale having one of the largest Armenian communities outside of Armenia, maybe the second largest, should send a resolution to the Baku regime's embassy. Hundred-and-twenty thousand people under, are under blockade, inhuman blockade, which basically, most of Armenian community today is not really talking about it and is not taking any action. Today, there was a big demonstration in Stepanaket and also in Yerevan, and I hope that city council members will, will think about that and will take some steps to address this very, very important issue. Thirdly, I just want to talk about the workers' situation in Armenia, especially in hospitality businesses, the lack of proper working conditions for our workers, our hospitality in the hotel workers, and also, the restaurant workers who are basically underpaid and working fourteen hours a day. Most of the Armenians in this town, both visit Armenia, are not aware of that situation, and I think city council should do some sort of a work on that, especially since we're a city with Gapan. We see that UPS workers or hotel workers in the United States, or especially in California, are demanding for their rights, and they're getting it, but with the fact that, you know, Armenia, the housing costs have skyrocketed for some unusual reason, and average worker making three hundred dollars a day is unable to afford housing, especially young couple. So I want to bring, bring these to, to your attention, so everything that goes in Armenia, a lot of Armenians in this town are trying to portray, so the workers' rights in the hotel industry, because Armenia depends mainly on tourism, especially for the month of summer up to October, so we need, we need to address that issue, and especially to city of Gapan, and make sure that workers in that town are getting paid fairly and are being treated fairly. So those are my three comments that I had for today, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And...
Mayor, we have no more callers.
Okay. And Councilmember Kusakian?
Yeah, just briefly, I know that few folks have come here speaking about districting and stating opinions or what they perceive to be facts. I just want to set the record, or shed some more light on certain things. Terms of fundraising in Pasadena, Pasadena, unlike Glendale, does not have campaign contribution limits, so I don't know how those two candidates accumulated that much money, but I think in addition to seeing how much money they raised, it would be interesting to see what number of donors they raised it from. I think that would be more telling, and it would be a fair representation, we do have campaign contribution limits here, and I'll look into that, but if the speaker wishes to find that out and share that information, I think it would be helpful. In terms of dangers of unopposed races, it is real, I will concede that point, but we've also had at-large elections, as we did in the Community College Board of Trustees a few times, where there was no challengers and the election was canceled, and those people just rolled into their re-elected seats and have had them for some time. So it's a danger either way. I think what the price is of living in a democracy is continuous vigilance and participation, as you are doing, coming and speaking in council meetings, which you're welcome to do, and we encourage it. And lastly, I would say that, you know, the person who raised all that money in Los Angeles, they may have, but for people who may have good ideas, may have other barriers, at least Los Angeles offers matching funds, which I've tried to push for here in Glendale, which we do not have yet, maybe one day we will, which will even the playing field for some folks to bring their ideas to the free market of ideas at our elections. Thank you. With that, I would like to make a motion that we adjourn in memory of...
I apologize, apologize, if we do have one, I have a new business.
Oh.
Oh, we do have new business.
We do have new business, then we'll do the adjournment, okay. Who has the new business?
Well, I do, but, but another thing we can do is put absolute contribution limits, caps, like the county does, on their races, so, you know, this is, there's other ways to deal with that. But I do have new business. I move that the city manager is authorized to execute the settlement agreement and general release of claims regarding the city compliance with Purb Decision Number Two-Six-Nine-Four-Dash-M, titled "The International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local Eighteen Versus City of Glendale," which authorizes the lump sum payment by the city of five million, five-hundred-and-seven-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and eleven cents in exchange for releases of claims.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asatrian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Kusakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Brotman. Yes. Okay, and now, adjournment?
Sure. I do want to ask, we just approved a major settlement, at what point does the public get to hear explanation as to what it was in regard to? So, because it has been out of the public's eye for some time, I don't want to end the evening with just a five-million-dollar vote and then walk out of here.
Sure, so, I mean, the settlement agreement is being finalized, kind of, today and tomorrow, but again, essentially, this was a longstanding litigation, I can explain briefly here, if you'd like. And there was longstanding litigation between the IBW, which as you know represents the city's electrical workers, and the city at the, before the Public Employee Relations Board, the essence of the complaint was that certain actions taken by the city in 2013 related to layoffs, as well as imposition of a contract at that time, violated the Myers-Mills Brown Act in terms of an unfair labor charge. That litigation proceeded over a number of years, and ultimately, the Purb found in favor of, of the IBW. City took certain actions to appeal those actions, was not successful. This final settlement is a payment of all back charges related to the findings of Purb.
All right. That, I would like to make a motion to adjourn in memory of Professor Richard Hovenessia.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned, in memory of Professor Richard Hovenessia.